Ready. Good afternoon. Today is June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The Griffin Spalding County Board of Education Work Session is now called to order. Ask that you please place all electronic communication devices on silent or vibrate. Item two, under call to order, our superintendent will provide us with our roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's get started. Sue McDonald?
Present.
Barbara Jo Cook? Will Doss?
Here, present.
Zach Holmes?
Here.
Our Centel Brown?
Present. Thank you for putting that art on Centel, sir. All right, now we'll have our pledge of allegiance and prayer. Pledge will be led by Ms. McDonald and our prayer will be led by Mr. Holmes of the third.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we come, first of all, to say thank you for your grace and mercy. Lord God, we thank you for giving us our daily bread. We ask right now, Lord God, that you lead, guide, and direct us so that we will make the best decisions for all those concerned. And we ask these things, having the confidence and knowing that you can and you will. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
We are now on item three of our agenda, the adoption of the agenda. What is the pleasure of this body? Before you do that, I would like to make a change in Section Four, Presentation and Discussions. Have a question for the superintendent. The end-of-the-year map update, was that done by, that was done by the Teaching and Learning Department, right, Sue?
It was, but the way it should be is Dr. Audrey Greer would provide that presentation, exclusive of teaching and learning.
Okay. Well, I would like, and the board would like, for Dr. Taylor to assist her in that presentation. Is she prepared to do that?
I'm not. She should be, but I'm not sure.
All right, Dr. Taylor, you prepared? Thank you so much. All right, so we'll just add to end-of-the-year map update, Dr. Audrey Greer and Dr. Tiffany Taylor. All right. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the adoption of the agenda?
So moved with the addition?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, moved by Mr. Doss of the second, seconded by Ms. McDonald the fifth. All those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Approved, four zero. Presentations and discussions up for our May two thousand and twenty-three monthly financial report, our amazing CFO, Mr. Byron Moneybag Yo Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. And if I keep getting introductions like this, I'll ask the superintendent to continue to let me go first. For three years, I've been last, so this is the first first, so I appreciate it. Good to see y'all. This is eleven months into the fiscal year, May thirty-first. So again, we've got a six-page report we go over. We've got the expanded version in your binder. Forty-seven point six million on the bottom left is your fund balance currently with the general fund. It will continue to drop. I'll explain that on the next slide in just a second. Nutrition is almost three million at the current point with the fund balance through eleven months as well. Page two is our general fund operating statement. And again, our revenues for this section is our QBE, our state money based on the per child, and then our tax money through the Tax Commissioners Office here in the county. So seven million in revenue for the current month of May, nine point eight million in expense. So again, just to educate you, again, it'll continue to drop. We have one more month where we'll have revenues less than expenses. We will also have to accrue our summer salaries. We've actually already made that entry where we pay the employees during the summer. The teachers who are one ninety, we actually accrue their salaries in. That entry is in June, so you won't see it till next month, but that'll be around a nine to ten, ten million dollar entry. So I already know that our fund balance on just the general fund, we're right now, I'm in the middle of the page where we show eleven point nine million to the good. Some of that will self-correct next month. So when we come in here in June, again, just be prepared that that will, that will self-correct some. And we're still operating on about a three point five million dollar approved budget going into this report for the general fund that would be in deficit. Page three is our special revenue fund. So again, top yellows are our revenues. We're pretty much in line with that. We've caught up a few of our drawdowns with the state and the expenditures on the bottom. Anything you see that's negative at the very bottom and white on the page just means we, we need to draw the rest of that money down. And when we close out the year, some of that's corrected. We have some deadlines in June. We have to meet for those, for those reports. Page four is the nutrition operating report. So you can see seven point six million in revenue. So nutrition has already exceeded the original budget. We'll give you an amended budget at the six, the seven o'clock meeting, but for now, he's exceeded the revenue figures at the beginning of the year, and his expenses are actually under budget. Again, he will have some accrued salaries as well that will change that when we do that this summer. But one point one million in the current year that he's operating to the good at the current moment. Page five is our investment register, thirty-four point five approximate million dollars we are managing as a fiduciary. Most of that is not, is Splo six, which is the bottom-left white number, nineteen point nine million. And notice the interest rates, it's amazing. That's gone in a, in a year to two-year time from point five of one percent up to five percent right now. That's amazing. You think about five percent on a certain million dollars of money. So anyway, that's trending really well. Hope that keeps up. And the last page, Splo six, which is page six of the report, one point one million with two months left in the fiscal operating year. Thirty-seven million is what we've collected to date. So again, just trending very positively. Again, you all know that the gas tax and all that stuff's been added back, back in the month of January, February. So all of that's back like normal. And it just continues to, to just be astonishing that the community continues to collect that. So with that being said, are there any questions?
All right, ladies and gentlemen, you have heard the presentation from our CFO. Are there any questions at this time from the board? Here tonight, thank you so much, Mr. Jones. Next up, we have tornado damage updates by Mr. Bruce Bob the Builder Buller, Ballard.
All right. Good afternoon, Chairman Brown, Board members, and Dr. Simmons. I did want to come to you this afternoon to go over and give you a brief update on the, where we stand with the, the efforts with the storm damage improvements and stuff. So with that, as normal, we have our non-negotiables and results pyramid and focus areas that we try to drive everything by, our mission and vision and mission, and of course, our roadmap to success. And again, this kind of mostly centers on the organizational operation, operational efficiency. With that, we have been since January the twelfth, when the storms came through, has been a lot that's transpired, a lot that's happened. Spent a tremendous amount of time with insurance adjusters, insurance company personnel, FEMA, and SRM, the contractor that's now working through the insurance company to help us with these projects. Prior to them coming in, they came in around the middle of April and got started with their work. Prior to that, and what we already had in place, you can see here just a rough estimate that we had initially started out with, with, from adjusters and things we put together, roughly about one, a little over one point two million. We had already had in place and it worked through around a quarter of a million dollars' worth of work through in-house means at the time when they came in, and now they're continuing on with those efforts. In addition to the issues at our sites and what we had with, around the sites and buildings, we did have close to sixteen million dollars' worth of maintenance vehicle damage. And then I have that little note down there from FEMA. Currently, with all the time and effort we have, we have spent with FEMA, and there is a potential that we may can, can recoup approximately thirty thousand dollars. The biggest portion of that comes in with the deductibles that we had to pay back to the insurance company. They will cover those deductibles since that, that wasn't covered. And then there are some administrative costs and some initial cleanup efforts that we're looking at. That has all been submitted to FEMA representatives and for their review and to try to finalize those details. So we'll continue to work with that. You will notice out there to the side, we'll go through a few pictures here. I'll kind of show you some things and note them as we go. But I am thankful to say that the roof efforts at Third Ward are complete. You may remember that we actually were in the process and had, actually had a bid package that was already put out to re-roof over there. And it so happened that the storm did hit it fairly substantially, and we were then able to get that covered by the insurance. And then, so that, that work has been completed. It was completed back in February. Here, about two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago, they finished up the tech house roof and got that completed also. So we're glad that that's done. There is still a little bit of work on the interior with some sealing efforts, but otherwise, that one's, is moving, has moved along well. Griffin High School, of course, being the, the largest of the projects and the largest amount of, of need for repairs. Currently, just my rough estimates here, based on where we are, about sixty percent complete with that. College and career, we're about fifty-five percent complete there. Oars Elementary and Moore Elementary, fifty-five, forty-five. AZ Kelsey, around sixty-five. And you can see Harley Jackson Road Elementary at eighty is our largest percent. And then Memorial Stadium, around ten percent there. We had the adjuster just came back out last Friday to do a re-inspection there and actually did add another roof over at the stadium. So now we are fortunate that we will be able to get all of the shingle roofs replaced out there at the stadium. So that's still in the works, but it should be cranking up here very soon. So just a few pictures, you know, kind of go through it a little bit. Again, Third Ward, large roof project, but that one's overview of that from the drone. Did a really nice job over there. Mighty Dog Roofing was the contractor for that project. They were also the contractor that did the work over at the tech house. So they finished that up, as I mentioned, several weeks ago. And then, just kind of looking through some of the other projects, this is kind of reports that are provided to us by SRM, and they kind of give us a kind of an update on what they're doing throughout the, the weeks. And so at Griffin High, we've had work done on the mobile units out there, repairs done there. Additionally, some work around the, the barns and so forth that has some damage out there. The trees, as we all have talked about before, were very, there's a lot of tree damage out there around Griffin High. And fortunately, they actually replaced, are able to clean up more of the actual trees around the site work than initially the adjusters and insurance company was talking about. They finally, as they got in and got to working, they allowed them to work with us, and we really appreciate that. Made a big difference. We still have the trees in the wooded areas that aren't covered, but as far as the area around the main sites and stuff, well-covered and taken care of. AZ Kelsey, we had a number of, of trees over on that property between us and up there at the Rosenwall School, and most of that work's been cleaned up now. We had masonry damage, roof damage, vehicle damage, canopy damage, so forth, over at the warehouse. That's all underway and being worked on as well. Again, you'll see in some of these pictures, just some of the massive, like the one up there on the far left, just mounds, almost, you know, like mountains of chips out there created from the, going in and chipping up the, the trees and debris that was out there around that site. But looking much better, much better as we, we go. Cleanup around Axon, still a fair amount of fence work to be done over there, but the site in general has been cleaned up. The trees have been cleaned up. Few other pictures here, we'll go through all of these. But Kennedy Road, we had a large detention pond out there that went around the outfield of the softball field, and most, all the trees in that whole detention pond were blown down, and the adjusters couldn't even get to the fence to, to see it. But with that, they've, have come in and cleared out that detention pond and have all that now ready for the fencing company to come in and make their repairs. And so again, it's just canopy work, fencing, tree work is the, and the trailers and repairs around them have been the main emphasis so far with SRM. But in addition to that, they do have contractual work that they've, they have now that they're working on and contracts for bleachers, for replacing scoreboards, doing other efforts with the roofs and stuff, that they all are working to get those contracts filled. And generally speaking, they are hoping that we can have the majority of the, the work completed by the time school starts back. There will be a few items that are, that are not done. I know there's a HVAC unit, for example, on top of the, the aviation building. That was about a six-month lead time to have that ordered. So it won't be here till September. But again, we had classes in there leading up to that back in the spring, and we can continue to have classes, but that's something we know we'll have to, have to work on. There'll be a few other things, but for the most part, it's coming along well, and we're hopeful that we can, good to see sites looking better now, and we can move this along and get it finished up. Any questions?
Ladies and gentlemen of the body, you have heard the presentation from Mr. Ballard. Are there any questions at this time? Mr. Holmes of the third, you're recognized.
Yeah, I got, I got a couple. And maybe Dr. Warren could, could answer this more so than Bruce. We, we met with some parents, myself and Mr. Brown, out at the Griffin High baseball field area. Have those concerns been, I, I saw the work, and I think pretty much what, what was in the list was a lot of what their concern were. Have we heard back from them? Have their concerns been alleviated?
Yes, the work is continuing out there at Griffin High School. They finished the work on the concession stand and locker rooms. They're gonna rebuild the visitors dugout, and from local funds, we're gonna do some work on the home dugout. The fencing has been repaired and whatnot. Batting cages have been repaired. So some of the work is done. I would say we're probably about seventy percent complete. But I got some great news, and I speak to Ms. Johnson. She was one of the parents that we met, met with. I speak to her once a week, spoke to her last Friday, and I was able to inform her of the work I just mentioned. But additionally, we submitted a grant to the Atlanta Braves Foundation, and we heard from them. They are gonna give us a donation. We don't know how much yet. We have a meeting scheduled with them sometime next week to go over the details. We put in a wish list for various items to support the baseball program that was, needed some major, major repair after the tornado at Griffin High School. So we're gonna get the exact amount next week. In addition, we're gonna plan a volunteer day, myself, Mr. Ballard, Mr. Pew, as well as the parents, to make a big deal out of our partnership with the Atlanta Braves.
Okay, thank you. Last one, Bruce. I had met with Dr. Olakoya at Moore, and the outdoor reading library area. Can, can we make sure we, we address the issues over there while we're working so they can utilize that area? It is, you know, minimal stuff like, you know, painting and taking care of the overgrowth, just a lot of aesthetic stuff. So I just asked if we can put that on the list. We go ahead and get that taken care of.
Leader Holmes is already been added to the list. When I was at Moore, right before school got out, I gave Bruce a call as it relates to the outdoor classroom, the painting, the cutting of the grass and all that. So I did not receive a timeline when it would be done, but I, I was told that it would be taken care of. So if we could just get a timeline, Superintendent Simmons, that lets us know when that's gonna be completed.
Thank you so much, Bruce. Thank you for all the work.
Mr. Holmes, I would like to add, related to Griffin High School, that baseball, softball, tennis complex out there, we're anticipating work starting on the parking lot rebuild in July.
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you for the update.
All right, are there any other questions from the members of this body? From Mr. Ballard? McDonald the fifth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I just wanted to say thank you for this detailed report. It's very helpful. And I, I mean, I never knew we had that many buildings with, with issues after the tornado, so that's, wow.
That's why I wanted to get that in your hand, just where you can have.
Yes. Really appreciate it.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Ballard. Next up on the agenda, District Operations and Student Services Summary for two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, Dr. Donna Warren.
Good afternoon, Board members, Superintendent Simmons, and Attorney O'Neill. I want to share with you and update on two divisions, District Operations and Student Support Services.
Director of Student Support Services, Dr. Chris Ritley is officially with us, so let's give him a great Griffin Spalding welcome.
Your last shout-out, Dr. Ritley. You won't get any more.
Okay, as it relates to our roadmap, I'm gonna speak to you today from two goal areas, organizational and operational efficiency, and family engagement. Again, for District Operations and Student Support Services. Two of the main components of the working office involves managing our playbooks. We have four playbooks, Right Open to Schools, Save the Tone, Plan for Next Year, and Successful Political School Year. I myself and all of the directors and coordinators are working at playbook and updating weekly. As it relates to policy review, this past year, we set a target of reviewing thirty-six policies, and they were all indeed, went through a first read, second read, and board approval. So we were excited about meeting that target. Just gonna give you, again, some highlights. In transportation, a big accomplishment was to develop the new school day times for next school year for elementary school, middle school, and high school. And the times have been publicized to our students, employees, and parents. And Mr. Harris and his team now in the process of redoing the rods for next school year so that those bus rods will have a bus ride to and from the school. As it relates to nutrition, Mr. Willer, compared to year-over-year, June twenty-three to June of twenty-two, we have an additional one million dollars in the school nutrition account, which is great news. He also received a grant that he'll bring forward in our meeting to purchase some server line equipment at Ann Street Elementary School. As it relates to facilities, we strive to maintain a seventy-five percent East Pla spending on a quarterly basis, that's ratio of actual to projected expenditures. Also, as it relates to work orders, we completed, we have completed about eighty-four percent of our work orders. Additionally, I'll mention to you athletics. I want to thank the board for agreeing to, to find a full-time athletic director, Mr. Bill Stikes. What does Mr. Stikes need to do?
Athletic. We started a flight football program at a high school that had twelve women from young age who lived in high schools and fifteen from Spalding High Schools. And athletics, as it relates to scholarships, we have eighteen students that will be attending college on scholarships, eighteen.
That's awesome.
That is awesome. That's awesome. As it relates to safety and security, we ordered Garrett metal detectors for our school, for our secondary schools, that is. And a couple of months ago, we ordered Evolve metal detectors, the other more advanced metal detectors, there in-house at our warehouse. And over the summer, they're being installed at our high schools and middle schools. Additionally, Mr. Britt has been a great asset in planning for big events, football, basketball games, as well as graduation. He's conducted many walkthroughs of our schools, coordinated with Jima and the Spalding Emergency Agency, as well as providing emergency kits to our schools. Additionally, Ms. Britt, Mr. Stikes, and Ms. Austin and myself submitted a school safety grant on Friday to the George Department of Education. We hope to hear from the results of that next month in July. Take a look at these numbers from Student Support Services, Dr. Moore and her team. Each month, we average about fifty-five hundred visits to our student clinics. We average about a hundred and forty-one students being taken to the dentist to receive dental care. Touristy visits, I want to thank you all for funding. Our tourist officer, Mr. Sutton, he visited approximately four hundred homes this school year to get more kids in the school. That's average of about forty per month, and the tornado slowed us down. He was out about three weeks supporting families in that need. And as a district, we fell a little bit short of our mark of striving for ninety-five. We have about ninety-two percent average daily attendance. That's district-wide. As it relates to exceptional students, Mr. Kelly, we have an additional eighty-six students with disability this year as compared to last year. Happy to report that our on-time evaluations are a hundred percent. We don't have any IEPs that lapse. And that, the DOE compliance rating, is considered good to have an eighty. We have a ninety-five. Also, disproportionality, we have zero percent disproportionality, and we're talking about a couple of areas, being fair to our kids' disabilities as it relates to suspensions, office dissonance referrals, and identifying. We're not over-identifying by overall, and we're not over-identifying as it relates to specific sub-populations. Some of the events that took place, Special Olympics, as well as the Special Needs Formal, they had a prom back in May that was a big hit. Continuing with Student Support Services, our counseling program, Mrs. Long supports counselors. About thirty-eight hundred individual student visits were made to our counseling offices. They did twelve hundred and eighty small groups and classroom lessons. Very, very important here as it relates to scholarship money awarded to our students. Thus far, two point two million dollars is what's earned by the class of two thousand and twenty-three. Again, that does not include the HOPE scholarship totals that will come out sometime this month and next month from Georgia Futures, okay? Right now, about two point two million. And we continue to have a very successful scholarship side. We had about two hundred participants last school year, I'm sorry, last, in January. And we have about three hundred students that were dual-enrolled earning college credits. As it relates to mental health and positive supports, Dr. McElroy, they continue to offer various family education webinar series, and they've been recognized nationally. Matter of fact, they're presenting later this month down in Orlando at the Model Schools Conferences for some of our work in providing interventions to our students and families. We have five schools that have met the distinguished TIBAS criteria. So we're very, very excited about those five schools. Additionally, they're gonna offer a social skills enrichment camp that will take place this summer. CTAE, Dr. Erga and her team, they offer three seals to our students, distinguished employability, soft skills, a leadership skill, and pathway, career pathway completion seals. Happy to say that all three of those numbers are up, fourteen more, twenty-five more, and a hundred and one more than last school year. So that's awesome work. Also, we're very, very excited to increase our inner pathway assessment. Last year, there was a forty percent, forty-six percent overall pass rate, and that's this year is increased to sixty-four percent. And she's in the middle of planning summer camps for our students at high school level that will start next week, where we're gonna expose them to careers in work in aviation, manufacturing, and logistics. And we have seven students that are gonna be representing our school district nationally at competitions this summer out in Colorado and Dallas. Fine Arts, I want to thank the board for providing funding this time last year for a fine arts coordinator that's very, very needed for our district, and Ms. Wilson is back in the back with us. We put that money to good use. In terms of general funds, about a hu, little over a hundred twenty-one thousand dollars were spent. And in S of Funds, we spent forty-eight thousand of an allotted total of a hundred thousand. So we have about fifty, fifty-two thousand dollars to spend next year from S of Funds for Fine Arts. What was that material used for? Well, teachers submitted a wish list, all of our fine arts teachers, and we purchased new instruments, materials, things of that nature at each level, elementary. and we purchased new instruments, materials, things of that nature at each level, elementary school, middle school, and high school. Additionally, several of our teachers won grants. We had seven of them to win a pie grant, and two of them went, won a fine arts consumer equipment grant from the DOD. One very, very important aspect of Ms. Wilson's position is providing professional learning to our teachers, and she brought in consultants on professional learning days to provide PL to our teachers of theater, visual arts, band course, and general music. Also, visual arts teachers took a field trip up to the High Museum of Arts in Atlanta, where they got firsthand professional learning from the artists at the museum. Last but not least, GRCCA, we had a hundred and fifty-seven students to earn a technical certificate of credit. They can graduate and go into the workforce, become employed. Additionally, they can stack those credits to enter an associate's degree or bachelor's science degree. Additionally, we continue to gain momentum in our aviation program. The Part One Forty-Seven is a designation for aviation maintenance, and we're the only high school program in the nation where our kids can be certified in the FFA Certified Part One Forty-Seven, which is outstanding. Additionally, the enrollment continues to increase at GRCCA. In the fall of last year, we had three-hundred-and-ninety-nine students enroll. This coming school year, in the fall of twenty-three, we have four-hundred-and-sixty-four. So hats off to Counselor Dr. Hall, Mr. Pruitt, Mrs. Ergo, Ms. Philip, and also Ms. Castagnan to have the intentional recruitment efforts to increase that to four-hundred-and-sixty-four students, as was the high school counselors and administrators. In retiring, again, I may have failed to mention Dr. Ergo's retiring, as well as Ms. Castagnan. They have done yeoman's work for CTAE and the academy as a whole, they'll be sore and missed, but we will, we will move on to serve our students' needs, okay? So at this time, are there any questions that I can address other directors in the office at this time?
Thank you so much, Dr. Warren. We have heard the presentation of Dr. Donald Warren for District Operations. Are there any questions from members of this body at this time? We'll go ahead and pass it over to Leader Holmes of the Third.
Yeah, I wanted to add something, just, just to get you kind of to elaborate. That million dollars in nutrition that we increased our fund balance, I may have missed something, how did we obtain that?
Mr. Wheeler, if you would come to the podium, please.
Got bad knees, man.
So the million dollars is through regular operations, what's that saying, that we've received one more, one million more dollars in expenses and revenues? So that's like a check at account balance, you just added more money to your account?
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
I think it's fair to mention also that in the financial.
Got to follow protocol now.
Let me finish then.
Mr. Holmes, are you done?
I just wanted to say to the new A.D., I think I've seen him somewhere, I don't know where I know him from, but good to have you with us.
Okay, all right, Mr. Dos, you recognize?
I just wanted to recognize that in our financial report with Mr. Wheeler, that he not only came in under budget and his expenses, but came in over budget and the money coming in, and we'd love for every department to be able to do that.
That's what we do.
Ms. McDonald of the Fifth?
Wait, I just have a quick question for Mr. Wheeler, you're popular. I noticed Ann Street Lines and you were before us a couple of months ago ordering additional equipment for older equipment that needed to be replaced. Is that going to be easy to do based on the, the chain, the supply chain that we still endure every now and then?
We have acquired a vendor for it. I will move forward with that process after board approval of the equipment grant use fund.
But you feel like it'll be ready before school starts or afterwards?
It is our hope that we can get him in, I talked with the vendor today, this has turned around about twelve weeks.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. I have a couple of questions, Dr. Warren, if we would, when we go back to the Deputy Superintendent tab of your presentation. It's more of a comment and to, just to say thank you for your work with the board in making sure that we have policies that we review. And thank you to the superintendent as well. For the upcoming school year, this, before school year starts, Superintendent Simmons, I would like, the governor's team would like to meet with H.R. to look at some personnel policies. And so if we could get that, a meeting scheduled within the next couple of weeks before school starts so that we can put some of those policies up for review. And of course, let's get together and talk about some of the policies so that we can move forward because as we look at the work that we do as Board of Education members, number one thing is to create and support policy. So there are some personnel policies that we need to look at and create if they're not already a part of our policies. Thank you so much. Also, moving up to District Operations update, Dr. Warren, are there any updates? I know that many different departments will have different inspections, and so through transportation, are there any updates on the inspections that have happened during the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year for transportation?
I know the personnel from the State Department came down a couple of months ago, and we passed their inspection. I don't have exact intimate details at this time, but I can provide it for you.
All right, cool, if you could actually get that to us, we would greatly appreciate it. The other thing, under Safety and Administrative Services, what do we plan? I was talking with the superintendent, and he can answer this out loud for everybody in case any of the other, my colleagues were wondering. What do we plan to do with the Garrett metal detectors?
They will still be used at various schools around the district. As a matter of fact, a couple of them will be here in the district office to be used.
Okay. So it's like at the front of the district office and the back of the district office, where do you plan on putting the Garrett metal detectors?
Um, Mr. Britt?
Chief?
You stepped out, okay. The exact locations have not been determined, but they, they will still be used. I can see at the front entrance, since registration as well. Go ahead, Sue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, as I alluded earlier, what we recognize with the use of the Garrett metal detectors is that it requires more staff than we have capacity to effectively and efficiently operate. So wherever we put the detectors, there will need to be three additional people to man them. And that's why we're trying to limit the use, that's why we shifted to a system that enables us to detect weapons more so than just metal. Because if you've walked through the Garrett detectors with the wrong type of belt buckle, you've been stopped. If you've walked through with the wrong type of bracelet or necklace, you've been stopped, yet you may not have had a weapon. Or you could have had the right type of weapon and been allowed entry. So what we're trying to do is figure out how can we maximize the devices with the capacity of the staff without having to hire more people. But we do intend to make use of them as we can, where we can, when we can.
Okay, all right, and I know you also mentioned that we may be in a position to where we can donate some of those detectors to community organizations that may have a need for them.
If we get to a point where we truly believe that the devices are surplus, we can do that with a resolution, or we can, in the event that a community has a need for some type of device, we can certainly allow them to use those devices, provided that they provide their own personnel.
Personnel, okay, for those, all right. Thank you so much, and a couple more questions, probably about two more, two, three more minutes. So, and the Student Support Service, this is more of a shout out for our Student Support Services, seeing the counseling programs that we have been able to provide in our schools, and seeing that there have been three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ninety-four scholars that have taken up to the ability to speak to our school counselors, knowing that there is four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ninety parent consultations and one-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty small groups. And just seeing the work that you guys are doing through MTSS and the Five-O-four meetings attended, I want to say, great job on that and making sure that we're in compliance and everything we have going on. Is there a number, and this is probably dealing with human resources, Mrs. Battle, if you could answer this, is there a number of how many employees have used the EAP services?
We use is a, it's kind of a piggyback on our employee flexible benefits. They don't disclose to us the percentage or the analytics of employees that use it. Now, we can speak to the services that we've been providing here without disclosing any names. I can get you the number of employees that actually met with our counselors on site. But the toll-free number, they don't provide that analytic data because it's a part of our flexible benefits packaging.
But we do know that employees are using these benefits or these services to help them to be able to cope with what they're going through, right?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you so much, and the last question. No, that was actually it, so thank you so much, Dr. Warren, any other, Ms. McDonald of the Fifth?
Dr. Warren and Mr. Britt, I believe I remember this correctly, the Evolve systems are going to the high schools, is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
Does that include AZ?
No.
Or just Griffin and Spartan?
Just Griffin High and Spartan High.
Okay, and I think in a conversation I had with you one day, we need how many additional people to help with that situation when people?
We're trying to have four people, two per high school.
Two per high school, okay. And then the Garrett will be used at middle, middle, I guess?
Possibly middle school, the ones at the high school, each high school, they have them. Pass them down to the middle schools, each middle school will have two, two per middle school.
Okay, and then what will we use at the stadium on Friday night, Saturday night?
Evolve.
So that's very, very easy to move?
Yes.
And very easy to set up for those occasions? Okay, that's great. That's awesome, thank you, appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Brown.
There are no further, are there any other questions from the board? All right, there are none, thank you so much, Dr. Warren, and those who helped to answer any questions for this presentation. Next up, we have Summer Lit Camp update, coming from Ms. Barbara Austin from Federal Programs.
Good evening Chairman Brown, Board of Education members, and our own Superintendent Simmons. It is a pleasure to bring to you this evening a brief update of our twenty-twenty-three GSES Summer Lit Camp. And of course, here in Griffin Spalding, who we are is that we will practice pace, where we will be professional, accountable, and communicate effectively, and certainly staying above the line where we see it, own it, solve it, and do it. Here in Griffin Spalding, we empower each student to graduate college and career-ready by having a distinctive brand, strong leaders, and great schools. Of course, all of our work leads back to student achievement as part of our strategic map, and we'll talk a little bit about that this evening. Just a reminder of important dates regarding our summer program, that it is going on right now, the dates of June fifth through the twenty-ninth. And just a reminder that June nineteenth, our offices are closed on that day, and so we won't have camp on that particular day. And wanted to just kind of remind our board of our summer sites. And our total capacity for this year was nine-hundred-and-fifty kids, was our goal. And wanted to kind of stop here and give a little bit of a background, just reminder of where we were last year and the work that has been done to get us to where we are this year, because we're excited about the work that's being done this year. Last year, our hearts were in the right places, we worked really hard for the kids we had last year, but we learned a lot. We weren't quite where we wanted to be last year in serving our scholars. This year, we're in a very, very well-off place as far as serving our kids, not where we want to be even this year, but better than we were last year. Last year, we hovered around the two-hundred mark on average for attendance. I'm excited to say just in registration alone this year, we had seven-hundred-and-seventy students to register for this year's summer camp, which was eighty-one percent of our nine-hundred-and-fifty capacity. So we were excited certainly about that. And you'll see here that on the second of June, right before you all, you'll see our registration breakdown by schools and by sites. So that makes up about six-hundred-and-six elementary students and a hundred-and-sixty-four middle school students that had registered as of that date. So we're excited about those numbers. Right now, we're hovering around the five-hundred mark attendance. Today, we had four-hundred-and-eighty-three kids to attend all campuses today, which was major. We thought that was an excellent number that we are, but of course, we have room to grow to reach that number of seven-seventy. And of course, sometimes some of the kids were out for different reasons, they may have had a vacation planned or had another event on this particular day, but we are very happy about the service that we're providing. Last week was our first field trip to the Fernbank Museum in Atlanta. And these kids thought that they had left the state. And it was a great experience for our little ones, I wish you could have seen the excitement on their faces. Some of them were just commenting, are we in California, never been out of Griffin before? So it was a wonderful opportunity for our children to go. We had three-hundred-and-eighty-eight little ones with us at Fernbank on Friday with sixty-seven adults. So Griffin was well in the number in Atlanta on Friday. So much to say that Fernbank shared with us that was the largest school district group that they had ever had in one place at one time. So we were Griffin deep, as they would say, on Friday. You all will have an opportunity, and I can't wait to be able to show you a lot of the pictures that we're putting together, our end-of-the-year report for you all, where the kids are doing the wave, and they're just excited about being there, school representation. So we're just thankful for the opportunity to provide the enrichment component with the field trips with our students. Curriculum has been amazing this year, so thank you all, board, for approving the use of Scholastic and for the use of Bell Excel for our math and English components within our classrooms. The teachers are excited and ecstatic about having that to be able to use. But the really big hit this year is that Lego system. The kids are excited about using the Legos and really, really exemplifying critical thinking skills, and just excited about seeing their creations come to fruition. So we're very, very excited about that, and I just thank you all for being able to put that in place for our students. So really, really quickly, these were our day-one attendance numbers. As I said, today, on first day, we were at four-oh-nine, today we're at four-eighty-four. So we're excited about that, that number growing. We're still adding additional middle school kids to our roster. Elementary kids are showing up in droves, so we're excited about those children being a part of the program. At this time, that's a brief overview of where we are, but I must give a huge thanks to the Transportation Department, who has ensured that we had enough bus drivers this year. So thank you to Mr. Harris and his department and team for ensuring that that was in place. Mr. Wheeler and the nutrition team ensures that our kids have two meals every day, and so we're thankful to him as well. Last year, if you all recall, we had two days of elementary and two days of middle. But this year, we have middle school coming all four days and elementary coming all four days. So it's a lot of meals to fix on a day-to-day basis and a lot of gas on the roads. So we're just so thankful to everyone and all of their efforts. And of course, all of the leaders that are in our campuses, Ms. Jackson is here this evening, she's the leader at O R, so raise your hands, Ms. Jackson. Everybody see who you are, so, okay. So we're just excited about that, and that's my brief update so far this summer. Any questions for me?
Thank you so much, we have a couple of questions, we're going to start with Mr. Dos of the Second, then we'll go to Ms. McDonald of the Fifth.
You said that last year we did two elementary, two middle. This year, we're doing four and four.
Yes, sir.
Do you attribute that consistency to helping with the numbers?
I do, I think that parents may have had an opportunity to look at their schedules, but I think just really the efforts of getting into the schools, it was a big part of our curriculum department, it was just a huge push from all departments to make sure that our families were informed or involved. So I do think that was one factor.
All right, Ms. McDonald?
Thank you, Ms. Austin, so always good to see you. I just have a, really more of a comment in thinking and talking to people. I believe, what would, what would it take for us to construct the ability for, for perhaps every school to offer summer school? And I say this only because as a teacher, I know when Joe Cool walks in the door, I know what he or she needs. Whereas when Joe Cool goes to across town to another school, those teachers may not be as, they don't know the student as well as home-based teachers, does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am, it does.
So what would it take for us to perhaps dream about doing that? Because I believe a teacher that's been with a child for nine months and can reinforce the learning for four weeks, I believe that we would see a bigger tilt of the meter, so to speak, because teachers that know these kids get to reinforce everything, maybe they, some things they didn't quite get in their regular school year. Can we do that?
I can't say yes, Ms. McDonald, we do need to look at the legit- I can't say yes, Ms. McDonald. We do need to look at the logistics of that. But I will say that we did make every opportunity to make sure that teachers from every school follow the children to the campuses that their kids are on.
Okay, so would OREs students that are in summer school, would OREs, if you had teachers that applied, obviously, would OREs teachers perhaps be at that school where they're located?
And they are, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I know that's a, I know that's a big dream, but I also know the results would probably be tenfold.
Yes, ma'am.
If I can continue to teach Joe and Jane Cool, who I have known for nine months, I don't know, there's gotta be some merit to that.
Can I make note of that, and we can...
Yeah, just dream big for me.
Yes, ma'am.
For us, rather. Thank you.
Dr. Simmons, you're recognized, and then I'll close out.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald and members of the Board, but more importantly, members of the public. You know, part of the burden that we have is we still need time to be able to effectively clean the schools. And we also still have the issue of having staff who we've asked to participate that either don't have the desire or the time. I do agree that it's easier to work with a student or a teacher that you already know, but what we've tried to do is minimize the disruption to some of the operational pieces while also trying to service many of those kids. So, very good point, but I did want the community to understand it wasn't without lots of thought and intentional planning that we determined which sites we'd be able to have these programs on. But more importantly, the largest and most important contingency, as you've heard from Ms. Austin, is staffing. You know, the more schools that are involved, the more drivers and the more routes that are involved, the more staff that would be involved, the more logistics and operations that would be involved. It would be our preference to be able to operate like a year-round, but we're in a situation now where we do have schools that need some additional things to be done in the summers. And we do have staff who have given all that they intended to give and would prefer not to have to come back and work with students in the summers. But we will continue to work to improve the number of campuses in which we use to operate summer schools and summer learning programs. But that's the largest contingency that we're faced with now and I suspect in the future. So, just wanted to share that.
Thank you so much, Dr. Simmons. Ms. Austin, just have a couple of questions. Can you, for the general public, because I actually just had a text message that came in from a parent, can you please tell the public and the Board what were the pre- and post-assessments used for the scholars for summer school?
The pre- and post-assessment is a part of the Scholastic curriculum that we did purchase. And so just for the summer school that's already embedded in the curriculum that we're using.
Okay. And what were we finding from the data from the assessments that were taken?
Well, the post-assessments have not been concluded yet.
Right.
That'd be on until the end of the summer. And in the front of, the front end of it, the kids were there because we knew they already needed some additional academic assistance on that, so...
So there was a pre-assessment done for the scholars?
There was a criteria that students met to be recommended for summer school on the front end of summer school.
So there was no pre-assessment?
Once they entered it, yes, sir, there was a pre-assessment that was conducted. That's part of the Scholastic and Bell Excel curriculum.
No, not a requirement, but I guess the parent just asked that they were unfamiliar with their scholar actually taking a test to see where they are. We know that summer school was recommended because they need it, but just to see what, if there was a pre-assessment done to determine where they are right now, now that school is over.
Not in the same manner as it was to determine how they got into summer school.
Okay.
No, sir, not yet.
So, but, but there will be a post-assessment done, and when will that be done?
And that's part of the curriculum, the regular curriculum that we're using.
I understand that, Ms. Austin. The question is, when will it be done?
The last week of summer school.
The last week of summer school. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Are there any other questions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Brown, just wanted...
Ms. McDonald, you're rec, Ms. Austin, come back, come back.
I just want to know where I can go observe Lego.
Any of the six campuses, all of them have the Lego program.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Wait, wait, Ms. Austin, I think we have another question. Will there be an opportunity for staff, scholars, and parentals to provide feedback about the summer school program?
That'd be at the end of the summer.
At the end of summer?
Yes, sir.
In a survey, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Austin.
Next up, end-of-the-year MAP update. Dr. Audrey Greer, Director of Teaching and Learning, and Dr. Tiffany Taylor, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. Thank you, ladies, for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Good evening Chairman Brown, Board, and Superintendent Simmons. Today, I will provide you, along with Dr. Taylor, some MAP updates for our end-of-year progress.
Testing. Can you hear me? Better?
He's gonna come fix it for you, Dr. Greer.
Need to get him a stool.
Testing.
There we go.
Okay. So of course, we have our non-negotiables and our focus areas leads. Our mission and vision and our strategic map, where today we will focus on student achievement goal area number four. Again, we will examine our students' progress on their reading and math MAP assessments. Just some background information before we take a look at some trend data for our students. We know that the data provided by MAP is used to inform teachers of student progress, differentiate instruction that drive the school improvement, and strategic plans at the school and district levels. Each of our schools have goals tied to some of the MAP results. So we will continue to inform our school-based plans using MAP. We know that our students in grades K through 10 took the MAP growth assessments in reading and math three times this past school year. For the fall, they took the assessment in August. For the winter assessments, they took them in December and January. And for spring, the students took the assessments in April or May. Students in grades K through 10 took MAP growth math, and students in grades 2nd through 10th took the MAP growth reading assessment. The data that I will share with you today is the trend data for our students' RIT scores. This RIT score, which stands for Ready for Instruction Today, represents the student's achievement level at any given time, and it helps to measure their academic growth. The dataset here simply compares our students to themselves. It gives you an average district RIT score for reading for students in grades K through 10 for the fall administration compared to the winter administration and the spring administration. What I will have you to notice is that from the beginning of the year to the end-of-the-year assessments, we saw growth for every single grade level. When it came to the grade level with the most growth, our third-grade students experienced the most growth from fall to winter, or fall to spring, with about 10 points for their RIT score. Our ninth and 10th-grade students experienced the least growth, both at about 2 to 3 points average with their RIT scores. Similarly, with math, again, fall, winter, and spring comparisons, you will see that we did assess for grades K1 and 2. K1 were not assessed on the reading assessments because they took MAP reading fluency, which is a new requirement that has been handed down by House Bill 138 that Dr. Taylor will speak about later today. When it comes to overall achievement, you can see that from fall to winter, or fall to spring again, there was growth for every grade level. The most growth is seen at the first grade level. So if you will focus your attention on that first grade line, you see they started out with an average RIT of 155, and they ended with 172. Our grade level that had the least amount of growth is sixth grade, starting out at 205 and then ending the school year with an average of 210. And again, this is the average score for our students. What I will say to you is that this data represents a true dataset for our children. Having the data collected throughout the school year shows us what type of progress they have made. It is not where we want our students to be, but it is evident that they are experiencing growth over the course of this school year in both reading and math. That actually concludes my presentation. I know Dr. Taylor is up here. I guess we will both answer any questions you all may have.
That's correct. So we have heard the presentation from MAP updates. Is there any Board member that would like to kick us off? Ms. McDonald the fifth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Dr. Greer, Dr. Taylor, I'm curious as to why reading kindergarten and first grade says NA, but on the math portion, it doesn't.
So for kindergarten and first grade, Ms. McDonald, we administer the MAP read-influency assessment, so they do not earn a RIT score when they take that MAP read-influency assessment.
Okay, thank you. Now, for the, I did some homework myself. I went to the NWEA site and got the norms. I think the last norms were 2020. That's the latest version, is that correct?
That's correct.
I just wanted to be sure. And what I see is we do pretty good K1 and 2, but when we get to third, and we all in this room know how important the ability to read at third grade, the... The gaps get wider at third grade. For example, the fall norm for third grade in math is 188. We were 178. The winter reading for math is 190, the norm is 196, we're at 185. And then the spring is 201 mean norm, or excuse me, the norm, and we were at 189. Whereas the grade levels prior to that, it's two or three, not even five points difference. And the spiral, for what I, my homework I did, the spiral gets larger and larger and larger as we go up the scale. And you indicated that in ninth and 10th grade. Question is, that's a, that's a grave concern to me. So we're doing things right seemingly at this level, but when kids get to third grade, and again, I'll reiterate, we know how important it is for a child to be able to read in third grade. What are we doing about it? Or what are we gonna do about it?
Okay. If I may, let me go back and just kind of, again, explain MAP, that it is a universal screener. And so this is just one of many indicators that we get to tell us, again, what instruction needs to occur. Our Georgia Milestones is kind of the, is the summative, it's the end-of-the-year, of course, assessment. And so unfortunately, I can't share with you the results of the milestones because they are embargoed. But what I will tell you is that we are doing something about the results that we see here. And when I'm able to get back up and give you a comparison in terms of, these are the MAP universal screener data points. Dr. Greer's office, I have her to do a data dig with the coordinators and also with the schools when these results come out. One of the things that we did with third-grade reading this year is that we initiated a, and this was Board-approved. You remember approving the District Management Group, DMG? They did a 10-week cycle with us where we went into five schools based upon the data. So in those schools where we felt like the data was not where we wanted it to be, we worked intensively with those principals, those coaches, those teachers. And, and I think I'll, you know, if, if the Board would like, I'll give you a result of just that data piece of where you can see how we use this MAP data to enact some change. When we talk about the fifth-grade math performance, when we did the MAP administration at the winter, the MAP scores were not where we wanted those to be. So that is another example of, we didn't wait until May to kind of see how those scores would be at the end of the year. We came back to the Board and we asked for another round of the District Management Group. It was an eight-week cycle where, again, they worked specifically with principals, with coaches, with teachers around fifth-grade math. And what we found with those results is those schools that worked with that particular project, they grew significantly above some of the other schools. And so when I'm able to come back to you all and give you all a Georgia Milestones report, we're gonna be celebrating higher performance in two grades, in both math and ELA, than last year's milestones. Fourth grade, we had a double-digit gain in two, in fourth grade, and then also in sixth grade in our mathematics. So as a result of some of those focused conversations and work with schools, we are seeing that we're able to close some of those gaps for our scholars. In addition to that, fourth-grade English, Language Arts, and math improved on the milestones over last year. Sixth-grade Language Arts Math, seventh-grade Language Arts Math, and eighth-grade Language Arts Math. We did see a slight decline in our fifth grade in both English and in math. Our team will begin to go back, and so it may not show that even in this universal screener. That's why this is one piece of data. Okay, this is one piece of data, and so we work with our principals around that, that this is one piece of data. Use this along with the classroom data that you're assessing in the classroom to see where your scholars are, along with our I-ready and multiple pieces, so that we can make very informed decisions about the improvement of our scholars. But we got better. We really did. And I, like I said, I'm very excited. I can't share the raw numbers with you because the state says leave them embargoed, don't tell the public just yet. But I had to share that in this context, that this is universal screener data. We use that throughout the year. However, our summative data at the state, we're in a good spot. We're improving.
Okay, so where could we be given the, you know, I got a copy of it here. I went back and, you know, Dr. Sauce used to use the silos and the, and the diamonds, you know, the last, the last report we got from Dr. Sauce with the silos and the diamonds was, number one, explicit and very easy to read, so to speak. Can we? Should we, because I'm looking at this, the norms on NWEA. So for fourth grade, you start at 196 norm, and by the end of the year, should be 204, 205. So are five or six points, is that good? Is that bad? Is that normal? Is that...
So the way to interpret that, we're jumping in any time, it is, all it tells us is how the kids do. Okay, it is not intended for us to use that as a, as an achievement bar. It is just how did they do at that time in comparison to other students who took that test at that point.
Correct.
In the school year. And so the bar that you have there, absolutely, we can provide that for you. And in our subsequent reports on MAP, if that's something that the Board would like to see, we'll always provide that for you.
Okay. Because I, I still would like to know, I'd still would like, I think, was last school year the first regular school year post-COVID? Is that correct? Is that correct? Okay. I would like to see numbers from the last school year, 2021, 22, and compare those to these. Could we do that?
Yes, we can.
You know, Mr. Brown and I came in at a time when RCD was thrown around the bend, so to speak, and didn't work out, and we've amended that, changed that, but I just hope, as a former educator, I just hope we're, we are allowing our teachers to teach. I do. Because we've got some good ones here. And I hope that we mentor the ones that need mentoring and a little bit more TLC, because we all, we all have worked in buildings where those, I mean, you knew who the good teachers were and who the, I mean, there's good and bad and everything. I just hope that we give our teachers an opportunity to teach. Just let them loose, let them teach. That's what they're trained to do. Okay? Thank you.
Are you done, Ms. McDonald?
I am, Mr. Brown.
All right, thank you so much. All right, ladies, thank you for putting this presentation together as it gives us an ocular demonstration of where we are. We know that in previous conversations, we've heard that this is a prediction of how well that our scholars would do on or how they would perform on the milestone. So when we look at our levels of growth, not this slide, can you go to slide?
Math?
Yes. Math, mean RIT, yeah, fall, okay. And so when we look at it, we see that there's been gains from fall to winter, from winter to spring, because it's done three times a year. But can you tell me which percentage of our scholars met the projected growth in each grade level for reading? But can you tell me which percentage of our scholars met the projected growth in each grade level for reading and math?
Not right now, but of course we do have that data. I didn't bring, we didn't prepare that.
So when you say projected growth, Mr. Brown, are you referring to the projected proficiency? What they were projected to be proficient on for Georgia Milestones?
So I'm looking at the percentage, right, the percentage of, the percentage of their growth projected for milestones, correct? Absolutely.
It's a different report.
Okay. And so how soon will it be before we get that, when all the, when the scores are all sent in?
Well, no, so again, MAP is a projection.
Right.
And so we did not provide that for you in a report, which we can get you the projection. But at this point, we have actual milestones, because it is a projection for how we guess or how we think kids are gonna do when they take the state assessment.
Right.
And so we can provide that report for you.
Yeah, I think that is good, because like I said, in previous conversations, we've talked about how it is a prediction. And so just seeing what that projected growth looks like now versus when the scores are, are all in where we are. Because we, or you guys bring these programs to us to purchase because we use them to determine what that predicted outcome would be. We use it to determine, like in your update that you have, to inform the teachers of the scholar's progress, and also being able so they can differentiate instruction, so that they can learn the materials, as well as drive the school improvement and strategic plan. So according to our strategy map and looking at student achievement and preparing our colleges to be, scholars to be college and career ready, and providing engaging and high-quality instruction, I think that's important to know what that projected growth is from the onset. So thank you for that. Looking forward to receiving that information, Dr. Simmons, as soon as we can get it. The next question deals with the projected proficiency, so you may not have this as well. And so the projected proficiency align to the actual milestone results. So we will be waiting for that as well, Dr. Simmons. And then lastly is, can you explain how our, our educators were able to use the learning continuums to be able to differentiate instruction to meet the needs of our scholars through the MAP assessment?
And so really principals have the autonomy on that in terms of how they wanna use that. How it is recommended is that they would use that for instructional focus time. And so all of our scholars have that additional amount of time in which they have, you know, from high, from elementary to high school, between forty-five minutes and fifty-five minutes additional. That is the M T S S time.
I'm sorry, can you, can you repeat though, that timeframe again? You said from elementary to high school and the different?
Yeah, between, between forty-five and fifty-five minutes of instructional focus time. And so each building leader has the autonomy to use those learning continuums as they would see fit to provide additional instruction for students during that time.
Okay.
And we last did training on the learning continuum last year, I believe that was, for our leaders.
Okay. All right, so, all right. So I guess we'll be looking for those items in the next couple of weeks as you get ready to present the full data to the board. So can we please make sure that we get that information in enough time? All right, are there any other questions for Dr. Greer and Dr. Taylor? All right, here and now, thank you so much, ladies, for the presentation. Wait, hold on, Mr. Dawson, a second.
I just, I think, I think it was said, but what Sue asked for as far as the comparison of a previous year and the year, and then also the average that it's supposed to be, whatever that word is, that.
I wrote down three things, and so the comparison in terms of how we're doing with this data set compared to previous years.
Correct.
And then I also wrote down, Ms. McDonald wanted to see the growth, and that's that chart with the bars in it, the diamonds. And then finally Chairman Brown wanted the projected proficiency report, and we'll get all of those to you.
As well as the projected growth in reading and math as well. So those are two different reports, I believe.
Okay, I'll make sure that I understand what you're asking for on the projected proficiency and then the growth.
Correct.
I think I understand.
All right, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Dr. Simmons, anything? All righty. Thank you so much, ladies. Appreciate you. All right, she's up again. Teaching and Learning Updates, Dr. Audrey Greer.
So for this particular presentation, Chairman Brown, Board, Dr. Simmons, I will provide you with an update on our gifted and accelerated learning programs, as well as Avid implementation in the district. To start, just to note that our district includes gifted students, as well as students who are not identified as gifted, but who have demonstrated exceptional ability and motivation in a particular area in our honors, A P, and dual enrollment opportunities. And I say that because the data that I will share with you today is not just based on gifted. It is based on students who are not only gifted, but in the honors, A P, and dual enrollment programs. Here we have the trend data for our gifted enrollment over the last five years. As you can see, for all grades for this school year, we served seven hundred and eighty-eight students for gifted. That number is a slight decrease from last year, but with testing, we are anticipating increasing that number for the upcoming school year. We have a number of supports in place for our students at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. We do have an ongoing cohort of teachers who are earning their gifted endorsement. We Sorry, someone went down wrong. Excuse me. You all appointed, appointed Dr. John D. Barnes as our Advanced Learning Coordinator, is coming. And we appreciate just her being added to the team. With her support, we are able to continue providing support for our elementary, middle, and high school teachers. At the elementary level, we will still provide services through Program Challenge. We will be integrating Fine Ops as well at the P C for the upcoming school year. For our middle school students, we will continue to offer the honors program, as well as offer them opportunities to participate in the high school credit-bearing courses. And then at the high school level, we offer honors, A P, and dual enrollment. As it relates to students earning high school credits in middle school, they can earn credits by taking either Algebra One, Physical Science, or Intro to Business and Technology. For this school year, we had roughly one hundred and fifty-six students to earn a high school credit. And in that particular number, some of those students, because these are students, they may have earned three credits because they took Algebra One, Physical Science, and Intro to Business. They may have earned two of the three credits for the courses, or just one credit. So just because you see one hundred and fifty-six doesn't mean that that constitutes the number of credits earned and in total for those middle school students. For our high school students enrolled in A P and Dual Enrollment, a special shout-out to both of our high schools, Griffin and Spalding, for being named A P honors schools. Griffin High School was named an A P Expansion School at the beginning of the school year because it was a school with twenty-five percent growth in its A P student participation from May twenty twenty-one to May twenty twenty-two with a minimum of twenty-five students testing. Spalding High School was named as an A P STEM school, and this is because they were a school with a minimum of five students testing in at least four different A P STEM courses. So definitely wanna give another shout-out to both of those schools for increasing their A P enrollment and for doing the work to support the students. This particular school year, we had a big increase of students taking A P and Dual Enrollment courses, as well as earning the credit. As you can see, we started out the school year with two hundred students taking A P courses. And for spring, we had three hundred and twenty-six students. And you can see the credits earned as a result for Dual Enrollment. We started out with two hundred and seventy-three for fall, and we had an additional two hundred and seventy-seven students for spring. So we have quite a few students at the high school level involved in our A P and Dual Enrollment programs. Oops. I am. Thank you. Next, just to give you an update on Avid for this school year, we trained a total of twenty-two teachers and twenty-four leaders for the Avid Implementation Program. For next school year, we are looking to train thirty-one additional teachers, thirty-one additional leaders, and we will offer forty-eight Avid elective courses. These additional trained individuals will be coming primarily from the high schools as we participate in Avid Summer Institute. We are offering those Avid elective courses at all four of our middle schools. They will be off, offering high school preparation courses for students in grades six, seventh, and eighth. That actually concludes my presentation for honors, gifted, and Avid as well. Are there any questions?
All right, are there any questions from this body for, questions for Dr. Greer? No?
Nope.
All right, thank you so much. All right, now we're headed to the literacy update from Dr. Tiffany Taylor.
All right, good afternoon, Board, Chairman Brown, Superintendent Simmons. I am going to give updates this afternoon for literacy. And so that will be the area that I'll focus on. And this will help me to communicate how our scholars will graduate college and career-ready. And this presentation will mainly focus on the student achievement goal area. So I have three objectives this afternoon. I wanna provide you with updates on House Bill five thirty-eight that was recently passed. This is considered the Georgia Early Literacy Act. Then I'll provide you an update on our letters training, and then I'll close with an update on our book vending machines and discuss with you next steps. And so recently, House Bill five thirty-eight, it passed that we would implement five particular criteria. One is the implementation of high-quality instructional materials. Two, we would implement a screener, provide interventions for our scholars, professional learning for our teachers. And there's also a component that focuses on teacher preparation. And so what you will see here is that I feel very confident about our implementation thus far of the science of reading. We have already trained forty leaders in Letters Cohort One, Year One. We are preparing to train about thirty more leaders, which is Cohort Two. And so we are in line and really ahead of some of the requirements that are coming down for House Bill five thirty-eight. The second thing that you see listed here is that, that this bill requires that we would screen our students three times a year. You've already heard Dr. Greer this afternoon talk to you about the MAP read influency. And so again, this is, we're going into our second year that we're doing the screener, so we are really well ahead of implementing this bill. So kudos to Griffin Spalding for taking the lead. The next component is the interventions component, and so basically that is taking the results from MAP and putting in place intervention plans. That is something that is a new requirement. We will be researching how to best implement that requirement. And as far as the professional learning, what you will notice here is that this year alone, we trained seventy new teachers on Orton Gillingham. And Orton Gillingham is just one example of a structured reading approach to literacy. So again, that just shows that we're well, well ahead of implementing this bill. Here on the next slide that you will see here, that when it comes to the standards, of course, the Teaching and Learning Department under the Division of Teacher and Leader Effectiveness is to make sure that we are providing guidance for our schools as it pertains to new standards that are coming down. And so you'll see here that this is the timeline for implementing those new standards so that they are implemented fully by the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. But with our adoption of new instructional materials, and really with the review of data that we've had even this afternoon, we won't wait until twenty-five, twenty-six to begin implementing that science of reading. We're doing that now. Further, you see that this House Bill five thirty-eight, it also attaches back to a previous bill. And so Senate Bill forty-eight was the E I P legislation. And so that legislation came down a couple of years ago that guided what we do for foundational literacy skills for our elementary scholars. And so again, we are just excited that we are implementing this bill, and we are in the process, Dr. Greer and her team, at getting with principals. If there's any principals who would like to implement the innovative model, that does require that we would provide assurances to the D O E. And so again, I wanted to just come to you and just share with you some of the things that are coming down with literacy and how our division is providing support to our schools, to our teachers, and to our leaders. Next, you'll see that Senate Bill forty-eight has a component around dyslexia. The MAP fluency screener is an approved screener for dyslexia. So again, Griffin Spalding is well on its way to being able to implement what, what other districts are really investigating at this point. We have already put those names in place. This slide just lets you know the requirements, again, of that dyslexia screener and what components have to be part of the screener. But you have already approved for us through the purchase of MAP fluency, the screener that we'll continue to use that does meet this bill. This next page, this is just the timeline. And so again, as board members, this will just help to inform you of some of the practices that are coming down and policies as a result of the recent legislature. At this time, if I could just talk for a moment about how we have guided the work or shaped the work here at the district level. And so this year I did enact a twenty-three-member literacy advisory, and it did span members across elementary, middle, and high school, and we had four subcommittees. And for the early learning and zero to five, Dr. Bearden led that committee, and she was able to host two events for our childcare providers. One of our goals was to increase the participants. And so we know that we have thirty-one daycares in the Griffin Spalding County area. And so out of those two events that we had, we had five different daycares that participated. We'll continue to increase the participation there. For foundations, Ms. Potter, our Elementary Language Arts Coordinator, she led this particular effort. And their main effort was to investigate the dyslexia bill that I've already mentioned. And we had fifteen who participated from the Griffin Spalding County Paid Endorsement for Dyslexia. And then also Dr. Greer's team took a, a team to visit Marietta City Schools to see how they were implementing the dyslexia bill and how we could just kinda take some notes from their page. Next, you'll see the disciplinary literacy committee. This was led by Ms. Goodman, our Secondary English Language Arts Coordinator. And her primary focus was figuring out how to bring back some of those Avid strategies and incorporate those into our disciplinary literacy framework. Finally, the Community Relations was the committee that I led. And we primarily tagged on to several events and competitions that were already being held around the district. But one of our highlights is the Book Vending Machine unveiling. And so what I'd like to share here is, these are just some various pictures of the unveiling. I would like to thank the Board for participating in that effort. And to date, we have vended or provided our scholars with three thousand and eighty-four books. I have a quick video here, it's just a few minutes. And anytime we're able to make the news for something good, I feel we should share it. So I'll go ahead and ask Mr. Harper if he will queue up that video.
I'm Metro Atlanta School District wants its children to get excited about reading. The Spalding County School District unveiled new book vending machines yesterday in every school. So students can earn tokens for good behavior or good grades, and then they can use those tokens to buy a book. They can take that book home and add it to their own personal libraries, as you can see right there. Some of those young people with their books are pretty excited about it. The goal is to get more students invested in reading. And you get invested when you get to go pick out a book and take it home with you.
And it's a whole course, you know, for rewarding good behaviors.
You know, for rewarding good behaviors.
Reading is awesome. All right, the time right now is twenty minutes until seven. We're following breaking news right now.
Right. And so again, kudos to all of our schools that supported and continue to support this effort. And so as I close, where our next steps with the community book vending machines is that I appreciate the Board, you have provided several potential community sites. Those sites are the Food Depot, Roses, the Hospital. There were two laundromat suggestions for Williamson Road or Solomon Street, the Salvation Army on Meriwether, and the skating rink. And so where we are at this time, I'll be working with federal programs and then also with Mr. Pugh through Partners in Ed to go ahead and meet with these sites and to bring back to you which of those particular sites are interested to secure those machines so that we can go ahead and get those out and operating in those sites. And hopefully, we can have those in place. We already have them in district. And so it's really just a matter of getting that agreement with our community sites. And I will provide for you a schedule of a time that we want to do a ribbon cutting. Five, we have five machines to place. All right, are there any questions at this time?
Are there any questions? We'll start with Mr. Dawson, the second.
So going back to House Bill 538, so there was lots of obviously instruct- things, screeners, the interventions and things. Did they put anything in place as to guidelines that we have to follow? Or is it left up to the district on how we handle that? What is?
Right now, where they are with some of the highlights with the instructional materials, they're gonna, it's to be provided. And so some of these requirements, they're kind of giving us a heads-up that, so that districts know and they can posture themselves that for students in grades K-3,3, you must use a science of reading-based curriculum. And so the implication for us, for instance, is we used to be a Fontis-Pennell district. That is not a structured reading program. And so that would be one that we would have to discontinue our use. Orton-Gillingham is a structured reading. So when they release the approved list of material, we are confident that Orton-Gillingham will be on that list. And just additionally, yes, there is a release of the screeners, and we've already checked that list. MAP fluency is on that. So for some of these, they provided some good guidance, and others, it's just kind of a heads-up that this is to come.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Taylor for literacy updates? I have a couple, Dr. Taylor. We know that Superintendent Simmons has brought to us several initiatives, Read, Write, Speak, and Solve to promote literacy. The Board of Education has supported initiatives such as Real Men Read and Pearls, Pumps, and Books. And so, and supporting Teaching and Learning in their initiatives for the book vending machine. And a shout-out to Communications for being able to tell that story. But what I would like to know is that regarding our scholars growing as readers, and you just mentioned the discontinuing of Fontis-Pennell. And so, ask this question, what does the data show from the previous presentation of MAP reading fluency compared to the use of FNP?
The difference in those is an apples-to-oranges comparison. Because what you have with Fontis-Pennell, that is a teacher-scored assessment. And MAP fluency, our scholars get a headset, and they read orally. And MAP fluency has the ability to capture their reading and give a lexile. Fontis-Pennell was leveled text, like you get an A, a B, a C, a D, A to Z text. And so really, we've discontinued Fontis-Pennell. So I have to go back and see what that difference is, but it's apples-to-oranges. Because MAP fluency does give you a lexile, and we do have lexile data that we can share. And so what we are finding is that our scholars, I think that they are taken to Read, Write, Speak, Solve, just like our teachers and our leaders. And so that, people know that as our vision for instruction. And we are seeing that resulting in our lexiles.
Do you know how long it's going to take to get that information?
We have it, so.
You have it, okay.
Yeah, that's my fourth thing I owe you, so.
That, right, there's a lot of items. And you talked in your presentation, when you talked about the literacy advisory committees, and I really appreciate, you know, having, you know, the different subcommittees that could reach out to our communities, reach out to our schools and scholars, early learning zone, I mean, early learning in zero-to-five, the foundations. But can you talk more about the committee that Ms. Goodman spearheaded, the disciplinary literacy skills? Can you talk more about that?
Yeah, and as stated, her main objective is that what we noticed, and it goes back to Ms. McDonald when she talked about how that learning gap widens, that students K through two, they're learning two, read, three, you're applying what you've learned to your reading. And so recognizing that the disciplinary literacy skills was to make sure that, you know, when we look at the House bill and a lot of those bills, it stops at third grade. And we recognize that we have gaps that extend beyond that. And so her goal was, how do we continue to put in strategies for our scholars that go beyond the third grade, beyond elementary, into middle, and into high school? That's really what that was about. And it was a research component where they looked at different models for what are the best practices for literacy in those secondary classrooms. And that was how we landed on incorporating the Avid strategies where we have already trained all of those middle school leaders and teams. And now we're taking the high schools back this summer.
Okay, all right, thank you for that explanation and just giving more information. Walk us through that particular advisory committee and their role and function. I also want to just give a shout-out to your department. I was at John Herry Moore Elementary School, and they were doing a wrap-up of their year, what did they do well, what could they improve on? And parentals were asking about, you know, questions that they could ask their scholars during dinner or during lunchtime or just, you know, as they're reading. So I just want to give a shout-out to Ms. Potter for collecting that information and bringing it back to you and making that happen. And so I just had a parental that just reached out and said, "Thank you," that is helping with their conversations. And even as she has had the scholars to go back and reread the book, you can see some of the answers now are more in-depth to, in-depth to what they are asking. So I just want to say thank you to Teaching and Learning as we talk about and I look at the Model Schools Conference, being an innovative district. Thank you for giving our parentals those resources so that they can continue to work with our scholars and we can push literacy in our district. The second question, we know that since I've joined the Board, OG has been a big thing in our district. It is something that our teachers, you know, some may have a love-hate relationship with it, some really like it. I was at Suzie B. Ackison, I believe, it was Ms. Corbin's class, and they were talking about OG, and the little boy was like, "Original gangster." And so I was like, "No, that's Leader Holmes." But what impact has OG had on our third grade? And I know without giving us too much information, but what impact has OG had on our third-grade GMA reading scores?
Let me be, let me go back and be specific, because what I don't want to do is kind of speculate and misspeak. Okay, I won't do that. But what I will tell you is that I agree with you that that is an initiative that our teachers, for the most part, they do really love Orton-Gillingham. And they see the impact, the immediate impact in the classroom is where our students are able to be tracked on, being able to pick up those foundational reading skills. And so you can see that in the moment. And while I don't have that, those numbers directly in front of me, I look forward to in the near future providing you with an update of our schools and how we have increased in our lexiles and in particular, in third grade.
So I wanted to, and you can do what you would like to do with this book, but I purchased this book during the GSBA Summer Conference from a scholar in Fulton County. And so I just wanted to present it to Teaching and Learning, and you guys can put it in any library in District One that you see fit to put it in. Absolutely. That's right. All right, and so as we continue to talk, as we continue to talk about, and this is, you know, this is what it's all about, is we look at the different programs that are used to help us as it relates to student outcomes. And so this is why, we're not done, Dr. Taylor. So this may take a little bit more time for questioning because of how important it is and the work that you guys are doing in the district. What percentage of our scholars met eighty percent proficiency as measured by OG?
I did not have that prepared for you this afternoon.
Okay, all right, so could I get that as well?
Sure.
I have a lot of reading to do, great. And when you think about proficiency in, in the work that they're doing, is that set at, is it eighty percent or eighty-five percent?
It's eighty percent is our benchmark for Orton-Gillingham.
And so for scholars who have not made that benchmark, what are the supports that the district is providing or schools are providing for those scholars?
And so continued training on Orton-Gillingham. Ms. Potter, she has a Orton-Gillingham task force. And what happens with that task force is there are, you know, pretty much resident experts there. And that's an opportunity for teachers to come out and get support in the implementation of Orton-Gillingham. It is embedded into our MTSS practices. Ms. Phillips leads that work. You heard me talk about the particular models for EIP. And so Ms. Phillips goes out to provide support onsite with the principals in terms of scheduling of students. We provide various resources for all of the schools to make sure that they have those.
Can you be more specific when you say various resources?
Yep, like the sand trays, the decodable readers. So just all of the materials that are required for successful implementation. In addition to that, the coordinators, they do site visits, you know, observing classrooms, giving feedback. The executive officers have walked with the principals to observe instruction so that they can support teachers in that implementation.
And so, and can you, if you had a, just a figure of, you know, how many classes or how many things have probably been entered into Kick Up as it relates to the training and development of OG? And how many, you know, have taken advantage of it? Either those who are a part of Ms. Potter's task force or those who are just, you know, wanting to perfect their craft?
Yeah, the task force has not participated in those walkthroughs. Seems like we had, I'm stretching, we have lots of walkthrough data. I can't tell you a particular number.
Okay, so can't tell a particular number. So what I, what I would like to know further is, I guess, in looking and using Kick Up to provide the platform for those type of professional development, would I be able, would the Board be able to, the governance team be able to get that number? Just to see, has it been an increase over the years? Do you plan to do more? Because it seems that this program is working. It seems that we have embedded lessons and information within the curriculum that teachers can use. And so obviously, it's working. And so just like to know how many of our educators are taking advantage of this particular resource?
Sure. Absolutely.
All right, and... All right, so we went back to kinds of scholars that met, got that, planned, got that. All right, well, you have answered all my questions by letting me know that you will be sending me some information so that I could read more and ask more questions. Thank you so much for your time. Are there any other colleagues? Okay, Dawson, the second.
Make the comment, back to the community relations aspect of it. If you are interested at all in the Doc Holiday Festival, maybe having a booth or something out there, I can get with me and we'll make that happen.
Please. Yeah, and I don't want to prolong the meeting, but it is just a beautiful thing when the community can come along and see that vision for instruction and giving our kids an opportunity to highlight literacy, so of course.
All right, thank you so much, Dr. Taylor, for your time and attention to student outcomes in our district. Thank you so much. All right, next up, end-of-the-year update from our Human Resources Department, Mrs. Judy Battle.
All right, good evening, Board Chairman, Board Members, and Superintendent Simmons. Thank you for the opportunity to share information regarding recruitment and retention for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Of course, our non-negotiables, be professional, accountable, and communicate effectively. And this work that we're going to focus on will also help to empower our students to graduate college and career-ready. The goal area that we're going to focus on this evening is Goal Area Two, High Performing Staff. We've provided for you, and if you look at, and I did make an update to the presentation, our historical employee retention data. So this, as of right now, as of yesterday, we had three hundred and forty-six employees who are leaving the district. And if you look at it in comparison to the year previous, it's slightly lower, but we had fewer employees this year as well. So we wanted to show you what those numbers look like for employees leaving the district. This figure, too, speaks to our teachers that are leaving the district. And these figures are subject to change. For us, with reporting, end-of-year retention, it's best for us at the end of June, really, as we go into July because of certain deadlines set by the Georgia Professional Standards Commission. And the same would be true for our classified personnel as well. So we have induction-phase teachers. If you look at where we are today in comparison to where we were last year, we're still about the same in terms of losing some of those induction-phase teachers. And an induction-phase teacher is a teacher who is working within their first three years in education. And so let's talk a little bit about the resignation reasons. People write on their resignation form, going to other districts, some have found another job. Another job would imply leaving the field of education. And when we talk about personal, that is the largest number of responses. But additional research has shown us that typically, even if a person is dissatisfied with the working environment or what have you, when we collect the data, it does imply personal. And we will be intentional about disaggregating that information moving forward. We do have three people identified as leaving us for a promotion and several for relocation. And we have two that are leaving due to medical reasons. Additional points we want to make, thirty-eight people are retiring, nine people were terminated, and we had three, what we call non-renewals, people who were not invited back for an employment contract. So for exit interviews, as it stands now at the time of this presentation, the information submitted, we were at fifteen percent. We are still conducting exit interviews, and that will go on throughout the remainder of the summer. We conduct our fall and our spring employee engagement surveys. In the fall, we had forty-three percent of our employees participate. In the spring, we had forty-four percent of our employees participate. Some of the retention strategies that we've implemented, the Classified Salary Study has been fully implemented this school year, every classified employee saw a pay raise in addition to a step raise. Our teacher induction program, we've implemented a mentoring program known as WISE, and we tap into the resources for our retired educators. Quality and aspiring leaders, we've expanded that pool of leaders, and we want to be more inclusive to non-certified employees. And we celebrated that group last month, and we had three people who were classified actually complete that year-long program. We've expanded our scholarship offerings. This year, we offered what we call our "So Our Own." And that was offered to employees who currently hold certification, but were going to add a field or get a higher degree. Our intern teachers, this year, we had five intern teachers. We're proud to say that all five have signed their contract and will be returning next school year with us. Also, employee feedback service. Also, employee feedback surveys during decision-making processes. We launch surveys when we're hiring leadership positions to get um, feedback from the employees about the attributes that they want in future leaders. So we use that feedback in our decision-making process. Additional strategies include uh, retention payments. This year, uh, for the, we are paying a three thousand dollars staggered retention payment. Uh, the first payment will be paid at the end of this month, the end of June, in the amount of five hundred dollars. We'll have another payment in June of twenty, of January of twenty twenty-four. And then a final payment will be made in June of twenty twenty-four. So it's a staggered uh, payment system. Then we also have the fresh-out-of-college incentive. That's where we paid fully certified, fresh-out-of-college educators an incentive to come work in our district. Of the seventeen that we gave that incentive to, fifteen are returning next school year. Employee engagement surveys are offered twice, twice a year, and sometimes we conduct uh, very specific culture and climate surveys when the need arises. We still have our employee referral stipends, as well as our schools, they submit their retention plans. Stay-in exit interviews, it's still another way to collect feedback from our employees to see what's working well and find out about their experiences with Griffins Walden County School District. Another benefit that um, I've gotten positive feedback from, and I've requested the, the totals for you, the counseling services that we're offering onsite uh, with the certified counselor, and we've expanded those services to dependents. Uh, if employees have a child that needs those services, we've been, um, we've allowed children to participate in those services as well. What, what questions can I answer for you at this time?
Alright, uh, members of this body, we have heard the presentation from our Executive Director of Human Resources. Are there any questions at this time? We'll start with McDonnell the Fifth, then go down to Holmes of the Third, then Dossel the Second. You have any questions, Ms. Cook? Alright, and then I'll close it out. Ms. McDonnell?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Battle, thank you. It's just, uh, I was looking for the page where it said only fifteen percent of employees did the exit interview. I mean. Explain to me how that is, if I'm leaving the district, do I get an email from HR as a, as a leaving employee to have that opportunity?
You do, and, and what we discovered, the way that has been disseminated, it gets lost. And, and let me explain what I mean there. We have to, an exit, when a person's leaving, we send them information about, say, benefits, you get a notice about Cobra, you get information about all of that. The exit interview survey is included in that email. And so what we have done, though, we've been intentional, so, and, and I'm happy sharing this. When we realized this number was as low as it is, we did go through and do a cross-comparison to those employees that did the actual survey electronically. And we have started with our student interns calling all of those employees, and we've gone all the way back through June. And we're getting June of last year, and getting, to make sure that they know that, that link is available, and we want their feedback by way of Survey Monkey. We also have face-to-face exit surveys, and we did a lot more of those last year. This year, with all the initiatives we've done, we still have face-to-face, we still have several scheduled this year. And the employee actually comes in and sits down, and we go through the questions and collect their feedback.
Okay, so how do you decide who gets a face-to-face?
So when, when we read the reason, that's a true indicator. Like if someone is just, oh, I'm, I'm moving out of town, you know, that's a little different from, I have had a tough year and I've struggled all year. That's the person we want to come in, have them sit down so we can figure out how we can make things better.
Yeah, 'cause I, I just think fifteen percent is unacceptable.
Yeah.
For me.
It's a little figure.
Okay, thank you.
That's it, Ms. McDonnell?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, Holmes?
Alright, buckle up, Ms.
Okay.
Listen, uh, I wanted to ask on, and I'm so happy that, that uh, we're looking at retention and, and turnover, I'm so happy. But what, what is the set benchmark that we have established uh, in these areas that, that's our goal?
And so we actually, we look at growth, we, we don't have um, what we would consider a benchmark that's unacceptable because this is a nationwide problem. So we have.
Say that again.
It, we don't have a benchmark that we would identify as unacceptable because this is a nationwide problem. But for us, we have seen more retention than we had last year. So that's some measure of growth. But the direct answer to your question, we don't have a, a threshold that says seventy percent is unacceptable. We just look to see where we've shown some growth and continue to try and improve.
Can, can I address what you said about uh, something that's unacceptable? I, I kind of have a problem with that. I understand that this is a nationwide problem. Uh, and I worked in healthcare, big problem. But, but we, we uh, we were held to a standard. Because if we don't set a standard, it seems like whatever we, we do or we get is, you know, is acceptable. So, so I have a problem with that because I think that has uh, a little bit to do with people's mindset as far as caring and going above and beyond to make sure staff is happy because, you know, if it's something, if it's anything that's not acceptable, people, people may not care as much about if people leave or whatever because that's what people are going to do. But, but I do think that, because I know most of the time it's not because of money or something tangible that people, why people leave. They, they leave mainly because of how they are treated, how they're talked to, and, and how they feel whether they feel value or not feel value. Those are things that I think we can affect and not just be lumped into what the uh, the nation trend is per se. So I, just, just my opinion, you know, uh, my opinion caused by as much as your outfit, so. The other thing I wanted to. Pardon me? Well, I don't know, I think she might have on some uh, expensive attire, right, Ms., Ms. Battle?
No, sir.
Okay, alright. Other, the other thing I wanted to thank you because I was going to address the specifics of the personal reasons why people leave our system. I think we do need to drill down to why people are leaving. You know, personal can be a number of things, as you already said. So thank you for, for looking at um, drilling down and seeing exactly what that entails. The, the last thing I wanted to make a suggestion. On these employee survey to me, just to me, my opinion, only having forty-three percent and forty-four percent of all employees completing a survey uh, with, with, with the numbers that we have, I feel like that's really unacceptable. I think we can do more, just some suggesting, I know you, you probably have seen some of these things, but the effort that I've seen being done to get staff to do surveys, uh, you, you know, we could do special events, survey parties, uh, offer some prizes, offer, uh, do drawings, set up in the media center for people to come and do surveys. Just, just, I think we need to put forth a better effort. Uh, instead of just putting it out there and, and looking for employees to do surveys, I, I think we need to do just a little bit more to make them uh, be more engaged to do these surveys because I know a lot, I'm, I'm not going to say a lot because I can't quantify it, but I know some employees uh, feel a certain way about doing, doing surveys. I know they don't think it's private and uh, I, that with all of that. But uh, we, we need to make it competitive. You know, as far as from school to school, whoever has the highest percentage, we could offer to do something for the staff. Just a number of things to get our employees engaged because uh, I think it's important for our organization that we hear from our employees and, and we, we value what they uh, the feedback that they offer for us. And that should be a big part of our, of our plan uh, moving forward. So uh, those were just some of the things that I wanted to bring out, uh, suggesting. But thank you so much, uh, Ms. Battle, for, for uh, putting emphasis on retention and, and turnover and things of that nature because that's just right in my will-well. Because that shows, really shows value uh, that we have for our employees when we do things like this. But we need to follow up on this information. Don't just do it just to get the numbers, we need to start doing something uh, with this information. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So Dossel the Second?
My question has been answered and.
So we know we've talked, we heard Ms. McDonnell, we heard Mr. Holmes, uh, talk about, you know, the nationwide issue that having with retention. You know, the Board of Education really wants our employees to know that we value them. Um, and so when we look at the resignation reasons, went to another district, another job, personal, promotion, relocation, medical, how many actually write on their resignation letters where they talk about the climate and culture of the school district?
Okay, and, and I could, and there are three that stand out for me right now. That I've, 'cause I, I see, I see an initial. So there, I could, three stand out to me right now.
So three that stand out to you. So what the Board would like to do, and I've already talked to the Superintendent about this, what the Board would like to do is to get a collection of all of those letters of resignation and to uh, look at them and to see the reasons that are listed. Here, of course, you have them listed, but to get a, a more in-depth insight on why people are leaving. And then also looking at the exit interviews as well, because this is something that we can fix. Climate and culture, yes, we know that it may take some time, but we believe that there are some things that we can do right now, at this moment, at this time, to kind of fix some of this stuff. And so what we are asking is that if we could, Superintendent, if you could get those exit interviews from, completed from this year and those letters of resignation over the last two years, so that we can begin looking into those and, and seeing how we can move forward in, in supporting the school district, Superintendent, HR, and other departments in um, make, letting our teachers know, letting our employees know that they are valued, and we see them. And I think as we look at these letters of resignations, we look at exit interviews, that's why we are taking the stance of creating policy that will be able to really help us along the way. And so um, I know we're all optimistic and we're looking forward to it because we just want our district to be the best. We, we, we tell people that this is the best place to work, we tell them that we have great staff members, we tell them that our scholars are the best. And so we just want to put that out there, and we want it to be known, and we want the, the data, we want um, all of those applications to just show that. And so that's why we're interested in, in getting that information. It's for Ms. Battle. Alright, no, wait, we're back, Leader Holmes?
I, I just want to make one last comment. You, you know I am by HR, Ms. Battle, you know that's. You know, at this level in central office, you know, I find, I find a lot of times, and, and this is for uh, this group and that group as I say this, maybe um, I know I'm not the sharpest pencil in the bunch, maybe some of you already know this, but you know, we have uh, values of the system that's not pushed down. It, it's not pushed down to the school level. And that's why I made mention about, you know, how people are talked to and things that are done or said to them. We, we, we need to make sure because I've never been comfortable with, with just expecting that we're going to have, have a high turnover each year because that's what school system do. I just have never accepted that. I never accepted that, and I won't accept that. I feel like we have people here in our system that want to stay here, but they feel like they have to leave because they, they don't see any change. So I, I, I hope we make a better or more, more effort to push down the values that we have put out there and that we start off each presentation with. I, I think we, we, we've got to believe it, and we've got to live it, and we've got to breathe it. It, it can't just be a slogan, it's, it's got to be something that we actually live. I, I, I uh, I hear, I hear from staff reasons why they le, they leave, and I know you don't get it in HR because they don't feel like it's going to do any good. They don't bring it up, they don't write it, they don't tell anyone, they just move on to the next job. And I think that's a, that's a problem in school systems. Uh, we don't work to resolve some of that stuff. But I hope that we will make a better effort to push down from the board level, central office, push it down to the school level, some of these values that we have brought in and, and rebranded as our brand. I, I think we, we've got to be genuine with those, and we need to live it, and we need to show it on how we do things and treat people because that's why school system lose, have a high turnover rate. See, in the world that I function in, that was part of your salary. That turnover rate, that was part of your salary. And whether you was a, a, um, nice per se, for lack of a better term, cordial, if you wanted to get paid and you wanted to keep a job, you, 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 you either faked it or you left. But I, I feel like we need to make people more accountable as far as how they treat people, how they talk to people. And I think we won't just accept these numbers that we've uh, you've given us because uh, I, I just don't see that all through the organization. And it would be nice, uh, I'm not going to be here much longer on this board. It would be nice to see that turnover and that retention number where people would say, uh, they love working here and actually mean it. And, and, and to know that they mean it, we'll see longevity. You can say you love it, but you know, you, 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 you're leaving, you're going to another system. So I don't think you really, in your heart, mean that you love it here because you're leaving. But I would like for people to say they love working here and show it through longevity. So I'm off my soapbox, thank you for the time, but uh, that's just my, 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 uh, my feelings and my opinion uh, about these numbers and uh, retention numbers and turnover numbers. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much, Leader Holmes of the Third. And the last thing I would say, because um, a lot of employees are confused that are either resigned or leaving the district. They're confused about exit interviews. And so what. And so what I would like to do, because we have their information, is there any way that we could, either through Remind 101, maybe through like a SMS text message campaign, send them a text message to say, hey, please schedule or please call Human Resources to schedule your exit interview today. If you have folks out there who have not had their exit interview yet, and you've, because we and I talked today, and you know, you've called people, they did not answer. So if we could just send them an extra little nudge, just send them a text message. If their email is still active, just try those multiple ways to reach out to them and to see if they are willing to answer, to come in, so that we can get that information. Any other, anything else? All right, thank you so much, Mrs. Battle, we greatly appreciate it. And just, you know, thank you to the staff, you know, all the presentations that you've done today. Thank you so much for putting your heart into it. Thank you so much for just all that you do for us and that you do for our scholars and employees. We greatly appreciate it as a Board. All right, so information items, construction renovation progress summary, number 287 is in your packets. And the monthly facilities and maintenance report is in your packets. We do have two items for executive session. We're going to do executive session after this. So we do have two items for executive session. One is to discuss and deliberate upon the employment of personnel. The second item is to discuss and authorize negotiations to purchase, dispose, or lease property. Is there a motion for executive session?
So moved.
Second.
It has been properly moved that we would go into executive session by Mr. Dawson of the second and seconded by, we'll give it to Chairwoman Emerita McDonald of the fifth. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Five zero, we welcome the Dean of our Board, Barbara Jo Cook, to be with us today. Thank you so much for coming, and we are now into executive session. Thank you.
I had no time. I'm in for a meeting tonight.
Let's tell them really.
We.
We.
What'd he do now?
We are back from executive session. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to coming out of executive session?
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we come out of executive session.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Doss of the second to come out of executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Leader Holmes of the third. All those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. We are out of executive session. This is on silent or vibrate. This time, we have our roll call by our superintendent, Dr. Keith Simmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, starting to my far right, Ms. Sue McDonald.
Present.
Ms. Barbara Jo Cook. Mr. Will Doss.
Present.
Mr. Zachary Holmes. Mr. Arson Tel Brown.
Present.
All right, we have quorum. All right, we'll have our pledge and prayer. Our prayer will be given by Mr. Doss and our pledge will be given by Leader Holmes.
Father, we thank you for this night, the opportunity, Father Lord, to do work in this community for our children, the students, the scholars, for the parents, for the teachers, for the administrations. But we lift them all up to you, Lord. We pray that you give us wisdom and direction in all we do. In Christ's name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Griffin Spalding County School System announcements will be done by our vice chair, Mr. Will Doss.
So on July eighteenth.
That'll be our next Board of Education meeting here. Monday, July seventeenth, new staff orientation. Monday, July twenty-fourth, our back-to-school celebration, which will be at Oak Hill Baptist Church. And open house will be for Griffin Spalding County School System will be July twenty-seventh from three o'clock until seven PM. That concludes our announcements.
All right, our next, can we also include the first day of school on that so we get ready to prepare for day one in the district?
Yes, first day of school is set for August first. And not included in our announcements, but I think it's worthy to note that this Saturday at ten thirty to eleven thirty is the Juneteenth Parade, and then there's a Taste of Culture at the Fairmont Community Center, and that will be from noon until five.
So, so, Mr. Brown, we're not meeting on June twenty-seventh, correct?
That is correct. Okay. All right, you have heard the announcements in your hearings. We look forward to seeing everybody at the July meeting. Look forward to welcoming our new staff orientation and our back-to-school celebration, which everyone always looks forward to, and of course, open house. All right, we're now moving on. It is now time for the adoption of the agenda. What is the pleasure of this body?
Second.
It's been moved by the dean of this board, Barbara Jo Cook of the fourth, and seconded by Mr. Doss of the second. When your name is called, please vote your pleasure. District one, yes. District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four? District five?
Yes.
Adoption agenda is approved. All right, anybody signed up? Ms. ready for public comments? All right, Ms. Jewel Walker Harps, please come up to the podium.
Dr. Warren. Donald. Let's make sure she's situated.
Just read a couple guidelines before you start. Ms. Harps, any individual designed to speak is requested to give his or her name, address, and the group of any that he or she is presenting. The speaker is expected to address the board and not the audience. The presentation should be as brief as possible, yet you should include all information considered important by the speaker. Unless there's a extension of time, each speaker shall not exceed three minutes, but if you need some more time, Mrs. Harps, we will give you that. Questions, suggestions, proposals, and criticisms, which have been presented verbally, should be also submitted when practical in writing and should be signed by the individual or the spokesperson of the group appearing before the board. Persons appearing before the board is reminded as a point of information that members of the board are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. No profane or vulgar language or personal abuse against any person will be permitted. The board vests its chairperson or any other presiding officer of authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who does not adhere to the above protocols. You're recognized.
Uh, thank you. I didn't hear you ask for my name and address, but I'm sure you did. Uh. I'm sure you did. Did you ask for my name and address and all that?
Yes, Mrs. Harps.
Okay, I didn't hear you. All right, I'm Jewel Walker Harps. I live at one oh three McElthel Drive, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Griffin branch, NAACP, which I am currently the president. To all of you, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Before I start, let me say thank you to Dr. Warren, who has been so generous with his time that he has tuned in with us, and I say us, EPI, and we have been kept abreast pretty much of what, uh, what is going on, and I want to take this opportunity to extend our thanks and our appreciation. I know he has other things he could be doing, but he serves as a link between you and us of the community, so, thank you. Uh, he does a good job. I don't beat him up much. He does a good job. Uh, I'm here tonight, though, too, because we are very, very dissatisfied, very, very disturbed about something that happened this year, and that is our summer program, the summer lit program that we happen to learn about late, and I know you can't do anything about it this year, but we just want to make sure that it does not happen again, and that you are aware of why we are concerned about it. Now, from what I can understand, and I could be an error because I have not talked in detail with anybody, but, uh, the schools that seem to, the lowest performing schools, are the schools that are left out of the summer program, and all of the inner-city schools are left out, and I mean Ann Street, Arkansas, and Moore, and I'm down here tonight to speak for them and to speak for their parents, and most of all, to speak for myself, because I know what it was like in the sixes, and I think some of you may have forgotten. When you tell me that they're being transported from their communities to somewhere else, and I want to remind you that these are not the sixes, and that that is unacceptable. The only thing that you really could tell me about this situation is that you're sorry you made a mistake. You're going to think better the next time. That is acceptable, but to tell me that there's something happening in the schools might be that would necessitate not using those schools. Uh, three of my schools? I don't think so, but I've checked to make sure that that's not a fact. Uh, whatever your reason is, it does not hold water. It's unacceptable. If you can tell me that these are not your worst-performing schools, then I'll think about it again, but you can't tell me that, because they are, and if they are, I would expect that they would certainly be considered, but none of them, not one of the three schools, has anything going on that would be considered remediation or enrichment. I heard the young lady talking about the experiences of going to Fernbank. These children will only go to their backyards and in the streets and play ball. How do you expect them to improve? I, I don't understand. I don't understand how you can live with yourselves. There's just no reason for it, and I'm waiting on somebody. I've asked several people, but I haven't gotten an answer, and what I'm saying tonight is incomplete, because I'm waiting to find out from somebody how many of the students from Moore, Arkansas, and, uh, Ann Street actually attended. I don't want to know how many enrolled. I want to know how many actually attended throughout the summer, these programs. Now, you can't just open them up and say, "We're going to do this here," and expect it to work. It is going to require some effort, some getting into the community, associating with the parents. They don't need to be the ones that have to travel. It needs to be as convenient, and you need to be as encouraging as you possibly can be. Now, something is wrong with this picture, and I would hate to think that this is the way you actually feel, and I'm sure that there were federal funds involved. I was told, we were told at the beginning of the year that we had a large sum of money, federal funds that were to be used, and I'm sure that some of those funds have to have been delegated for the youth in underperforming schools. What happened? Where did it go? But we plan to call some of you to the table, August, September, and October. We want answers. We want numbers, and we want you to see things just as we are seeing them, and that's bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker Harps.
May I say one other thing?
Absolutely.
Criteria, we know what, we don't need a piece of paper to tell us what the needs are for these schools. We know the demographics. That's why we always talk about how poor they do. Nobody wants to go and teach there. You're right, nobody, nobody wants to go and teach there. Somebody has to. You don't need a piece of paper to tell you that those children who live over there in those side hills or some of the other areas around those schools do not need what you have to offer, and you have chosen to go to the schools where there is less needed. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me a minute more.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Harps. All right, we are going to skip the break to allow our guests to leave and go right into it. Next item up is consent agenda. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the consent agenda?
Chair, make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
All right, it's been properly moved by Mr. Doss of the second to accept the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Leader Holmes of the third. When your name is called, please tell me your vote. McDonald of the fifth?
Yes.
Cook of the fourth? Holmes of the third?
Yes.
Doss of the second?
Yes.
And Brown of the first?
Yes.
Five-zero. Consent agenda is approved. All right, action items. First up is the serving line for Ann Street Elementary, Mr. Robert Wheeler.
Good afternoon, Chairman Brown, board members, Superintendent Dr. Simmons. Equipment grant purchase of serving lines. The Griffin Spalding County Schools Nutrition Department is seeking approval to complete the purchase of the serving lines for Ann Street Elementary. The cost of the serving line is thirty-six thousand, four hundred eighty-one dollars and eighty cents, which will be paid from the equipment grant we received for this school year twenty-three, twenty-four. Little background, way equipment grants work. We applied for them early on, uh, the year before. Those monies are supplied by the Department of, Secretary of State, um, so that we don't, as a district, put the bill for it. We were able to get an equipment grant last year, uh, for Tilden's Killer at Cowan Elementary, and we were able to get one this year, um, I meant for Ann Street Elementary Serving Lines, and that was partially as a result of our, uh, fund balances for the previous six years or whatnot. So now, um, the total grant amount was thirty-seven thousand, one hundred ninety-six dollars. We will pay, um, thirty-six thousand dollars, four hundred eighty-one, thirty-six thousand, four hundred eighty-one dollars and eighty cents upfront. That money will be reimbursed to us when we send the receipt into the Department of Education. So at this time, it is recommended that the Board of Education approves the purchase of the serving line for Manning Brothers Company for Ann Street Elementary School. The Griffin Spalding County School Nutrition Department will be reimbursed, the cost of the serving lines of thirty-six thousand, four hundred eighty-one dollars and eighty cents from Good Dog using the twenty-three, twenty-four equipment grant allotment.
All right, thank you so much, uh, ladies and gentlemen of this body. You have heard the presentation from Mr. Robert Wheeler about the serving line for Ann Street Elementary School. Are there any questions at this time? Hearing that there are no questions, uh, what is the pleasure of this body as it relates to action items, serving line for Ann Street Elementary?
Move to approve?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. McDonald of the fifth and seconded by Mr. Doss of the second. When your name is called, please vote. McDonald?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Approved, five-zero. Next up, Chromebook purchase, Mr. Lonnie Harper.
Good afternoon, Chairman Brown, Dr. Simmons, School Board. The recommendation of the superintendent is for the BOE to approve funding for the purchase of two thousand, three hundred ninety-two Chromebooks for an amount not to exceed six-hundred ninety-six thousand, four hundred twenty-three dollars to be paid for, uh, from SPOSS six. This is our annual purchase to replace, uh, all of the Chromebooks we've had in the past that have reached their end of life. Those would be our, uh, Gen One three hundred Es and Gen Two three hundred Es, as well as some additional Dells and HPs, uh, and it's also to replace any devices that have been lost or stolen or just completely damaged this year, and it will follow our federal programs ramp for providing new devices to all first, fifth, and ninth grade students. So at this time, the recommendation is for the Board of Education to approve funding for the purchase of two thousand, three hundred ninety-two Chromebooks for an amount not to exceed six-hundred ninety-six thousand, four hundred twenty-three dollars.
All right, thank you so much for the presentation, Mr. Harper. Ladies and gentlemen of this body, you've heard the presentation from Mr. Harper, and you had the superintendent's recommendation in front of you. What is the pleasure of this body?
So moved.
It's been properly moved by Cook of the fourth. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Doss of the second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Five-zero, approved. Chromebook warranty purchase, Mr. Lonnie Harper.
Yes, sir. The recommendation of the superintendent is for the BOE to approve funding for the purchase of two thousand, three hundred ninety-two Chromebook warranties for an amount not to exceed three hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, which is another component of our SPOSS six. Uh, this is the warranties that we started purchasing last year as a separate component through Lexicon. Uh, the data from there, it was just a much better platform, faster return on repairs, better coverage, and they did a lot of break, fix, repairs for us on other known weaknesses of devices so that they didn't damage in the future. Uh, so we just want to continue that process of covering all of our devices through our partnership with Lexicon. Uh, so it is recommended that the Board of Education approves funding for the purchase of two thousand, three hundred ninety-two Chromebook warranties for an amount not to exceed three hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions, comments, concerns as it relates to this particular item? It looks like Mr. Holmes of the third has a question. You're recognized.
Lonnie, uh, I'm, I'm just asking for my knowledge, because I've seen it done different ways on purchases like this.
Yes, sir.
We, we, uh, we buying all these Chromebooks. Uh, wha, wha, why do we have to purchase, uh, warranties individually instead of just a, you know, a contract?
Right.
Or lack of a better term? Why don't Lexicon offer that?
So, in the past, or actually the past eight or nine years, every time we did a Chromebook purchase, the warranting was part of the purchase of the Chromebook device?
Right.
That was provided through the vendor. A lot of times it was through Virticom. That's the method we used to do, uh, and then just as things changed and supply change moves on, we started talking with other districts, and our surrounding districts past couple of years, Hennah County, uh, Coweta, Coweta, Fayette, had all started moving over to a partnership with Lexicon. We met with them to see what's the benefit of buying warranties as separate piece as opposed to just directly from the vendor. Um, they had a lot of positives. They integrate with our ticketing system, so it used to be schools would enter a ticket, we would have to submit a ticket to the company. Now, as soon as the school submits the ticket, the company goes ahead and gets it. They're part of our, our incident IQ platform, so there's no double work. Also, a lot of the props that was going to Lexicon was, uh, for instance, the HP Chromebooks have a known weakness about their hinge. Just open, close, open, close after a while, they'll just break. So with Lexicon, if they pick up an HP for any kind of repairs, they know that, and they go ahead and while they have that device, they provide reinforcements on the inside of it so that it doesn't break. So that's why I was mentioning, they do a lot of break repair preventive maintenance while they have the device, because most devices have some sort of known issue, and they like to stay abreast of that. And also with, um, their services with providing us, uh, hot, hotspot swaps, so they'll keep a cache of our inventory separate so that, you know, if we for some reason have a huge run on devices being damaged, testing's coming up, and we're not going to get those devices back in time, they'll go ahead and just give us some devices to use, like for testing, so that we don't get caught in a situation where we're not prepared. use, like for testing, so that we don't get caught in a situation where we're not prepared.
That's awesome.
Yeah. So it's a lot of districts have moved over to Lexicon, and we looked into their services and talked with surrounding RISA districts, and there's a lot of favorable feedback there. And the cost for their warranties, very similar. Their warranty includes a case, so in the past, we would do the bid for the warranty and for the case. You know, those were, they combine all that components together.
I remember that.
Okay, thank you. I knew it was something different, but I just wanted to know why.
Yes, yeah, it's a different process for us.
All right, thank you so much. Are there any other questions? All right, ladies and gentlemen of this body, you have heard the presentation for the Chromebook warranty purchase. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the purchase of the Chromebook warranty?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Holmes of the third and seconded by Doss of the second. When your name is called, please vote. Brown of the first? Yes. Doss of the second?
Yes.
Holmes of the third?
Yes.
Cook of the fourth?
Yes.
McDonald of the fifth?
Yes.
All right, five zero, congratulations, approved. I have to step out, so Mr. Doss is going to preside at the moment.
So Mr. Harper, you can continue with the Epic Purchase and Installation of Cowan Road. Okay.
The recommendation of the superintendent is for the BOE to approve funding for the purchase of audio enhancement Epic System and for camera upgrades for four hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-nine cents to be paid for from SPOSS six. This is a continuation of the upgrades to our audio enhancement components that we got involved with. I think that was going on seven years now. And so we're at the point where a lot of the microphones need to be replaced, but audio enhancement no longer manufactures that component because it's just dated. And so as part of their recommendation is just upgrading. Also, with upgrading the cameras, we're moving away from the Safari Montage platform, which we originally started with. There's just a lot of negative feedback in that it's real clunky to use to get to the classroom camera on the teacher's side. There's a lot of clicks. But with the Epic System, which we've already put in place at Futral, Jackson, Ann Street, Atkinson, and more, it's much more user friendly. As soon as the teacher logs in, they're in their camera. That platform also is going to be utilized during UVA because coaches, administrators can watch the videos that the teachers record, and they can embed into the video, video feedback. They can link it back, link it back to TIC standards and say, you know, you need to work on this, or this is a connection, or here's some feedback, have you considered? So it's a great coaching tool that we were looking for with Safari Montage. This just does it far superior. There's a lot of other components that'll be added into this that's just going to provide benefits and a lot of upgrades to compartmentalize a lot of the components we have that are all separate now. So it's kind of a lot to go into, but it's, if you've seen it at those schools so far, it's just a far superior platform. So it is recommended that the Board of Education approves funding for the purchase of audio enhancement Epic System and for camera upgrades for four hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-nine cents to be paid for from SPOSS six.
Okay, Board members, any questions for Mr. Harper? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion will be by Ms. Cook, and I'll take it as a second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand, and that will be four zero. Thank you, Mr. Harper. Our amended budget, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Good evening again, Board members. The district recommends approval of the FY twenty-three amended budget with appropriations as follows. General Fund, one hundred and six million, six hundred and forty-five thousand, nineteen dollars. Special Revenue Fund, thirty-three million, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And Nutrition Fund, seven million, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred dollars. Little bit of background, the Griffin Spalding County School System amends their budgets typically once a year. It's handled different in different school districts, but in our district, it's normally in the June timeframe. So what we've provided to you here is a synopsis. It's a three-page document in one PDF, and I'll just run through it right quick with you. So this is our general fund, and over on the left-hand side of the page in white is the original budget that you all adopted last June. And then we have categories starting from left to right, where we will amend at the top for additional revenues, possibly, you know, from the tax office if the digest is performing favorably according to what we originally budgeted. Also, grants that we might have received, for example, for buses, et cetera, and state and local grants. We also allocate over workers' compensation program. If you'll remember, we're still handling our workers' comp through the month of April in a self-insurance mode. For next year, we're moving to fully insured with a small deductible, and so we're having to still amend that this year. And then also our after-school program, we allocate that money as well and break it out. In the expense section, which is in the middle of the page, some of the reasons we had to amend that, we, in the month of April, you all approved two GoToGSBA for fully insured, so we had some, to resolve all of our open claims, which was nine hundred and something thousand dollars to get those off of the books, so we won't continue to carry those for four to five years. So that was booked into the general fund, but that was a big reason. And then plus, like I said, the expense side of ordering some buses, which you all approved a few months ago, we have to amend that in the expenses for what, as well. So that was the general fund. Let me run through all three here right quick, and then I'll answer any questions. Special Revenue, which is again our grants. So on the financial report each month, I think it's page three, over to the left, you'll, you'll have this same budget in white to the left-hand side of the yellow. Those are normally estimates of the original budget, and then we get carryover monies through the year. So this is to acknowledge carryover monies for the special revenue grants, which is in the yellow. So they're still balancing the same way they did for the original budget, but the revenues and expenses did increase. And then for the nutrition program, as we talked about earlier, nutrition is performing favorably on the revenue side. He's got one more month of revenue, which may be some bill backs for the summer program or lit program or whatever his revenue is for those. It's not the regular feeding program during the year. And then the expense side, as I told you earlier, we'll have to accrue the salaries for the employees that may not be full year. We still have to expense those in the correct year. So we've got him down to about three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars worth of pickup in the current year. So that's a synopsis of the three. So with that being said, the recommendation would be that the Griffin Spalding Board of Education approved the FY twenty-three amended budget with appropriations as mentioned earlier. Is there any questions?
Board members, any questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion then for the amended budget. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second by Ms. McDonald. Motion was by Mr. Holmes. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Five zero. Mr. Brown has been able to return, and I will turn it back over to you.
Keep going, sir.
All right. We will then move into our access controls. Mr. Ballard?
Yes, good evening again, Chairman Brown, Board, and Dr. Simmons. Here tonight to present to you the access controls, Achilles Control System. We're looking at for a number of our doors within the system. This is a project that we've been working on for most of this school year. It actually began in just with Anthony Akins well before he left, and he was the one who actually went around and worked with the schools and worked with the different departments and stuff in establishing which doors were kind of the priorities and which they wanted to see done initially. It was established that we would cover a hundred and two doors throughout the system. With that, we worked with the finance department, Ms. Bullock, and put together a proposal. So this was something not just done by the maintenance department, it was also done through IT and the safety coordinator, working through this with us in conjunction with one another as we put this together. And we put it out for bids and ended up getting eight bids or proposals that came in for it. They ranged from two hundred, around a little over two hundred thousand to around six hundred and seven thousand dollars. Many variations, many differences were presented and had to be looked at. We looked through those, and we actually picked three, created a short list of three contractors. As noted up there, they were A3, JCI, and RJY that actually participated and came down and did presentations to further review each one of their systems and what they were proposing. We were able to talk with them about a number of, you know, the questions we had, how their systems work, how they would integrate in with our systems, with our employee's systems and stuff to download data and keep up with data as people depart and come into the system, how we could then go about providing them with the needed access for the doors and the systems. And with that, we went through and actually ended up choosing the lowest price proposal, which was submitted by Johnson Control Systems. We looked at, there's several other things as far as the way you can utilize the system. You can either use like a card, or you can actually put the credentials on your phone to access and so forth. So there are some additional costs involved with some things there that we will be working through, as well as with these systems being put in at existing buildings where we already have doors and systems and just some unknowns out there. It was recommended that we provide a contingency of about twenty-five percent as we move forward with that to make sure that we were able to cover all the costs. And with that being said, it's recommended that Griffin Spalding County Board of Education approve a not-to-exceed price of two hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and four cents for access control systems proposed to meet the needs of Griffin Spalding County Schools. And then since the time this was done, it was established that would be with Johnson Controls.
Okay, Board members, any questions?
I do.
Yes, we'll start with Ms. McDonald.
Bruce, does, how do cameras enter into this?
Cameras?
Cameras, as far as who, we can go back and see that four people entered a certain building at a certain time on a certain day?
Yes, ma'am. So the majority of these areas where we have the, the access is already set up where we have cameras on those entrances and exits anyway.
Already?
So we'll be able to monitor those. We, actually, we're talking earlier today with, about some safety considerations and so forth. And we do have some of the cameras that we have in our system that we had used before when we were going through the pandemic, and the thermal cameras that actually have some capabilities of facial recognition and stuff. So we may also look at some of the options and opportunities. We've been able to tie some of that in to see if someone's coming in, maybe that shouldn't be coming in as well.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Mr. Holmes?
You know, I, we're looking at this about the door hardware, and I've noticed at, at some schools I've visited, the hardware on the door, present doors, as far as them closing, there've been some, I would say deficiencies on how they close. Some close too hard, don't have the, the, the control that, you know, slows it down. And, and how, will, will this, will, will they make sure just any doors that may have some deficiency, or will that be on us to do that?
Yes, sir. As, as they move forward and, and put in the systems, they will make adjustments to those doors. But it is something that we are constantly having to, to work on throughout the system. I mean, that's just the nature of the beast. The more they're used, the more you have to work on them. The beauty of this system and what we will gain from it that will be a big plus, we believe, is the fact that each one of these systems will have a door contactor there. So if for some reason that door did not close all the way, then we would know and be able to, to make sure, you know, that it was closed, and they, or we could also find out, hey, we have a door that's been propped open or for some reason being held open, and then go and take, take care of that much quicker than just somebody coming along and finding one.
So, so, so will, will they, will they, I guess, have the responsibility of doing PM, that type of stuff on, on equipment doors? We have to do that?
Not the way it's set up right now. You know, we would have a warranty period with them on what they install. Basically, it would be a year warranty period. But, but as far as then for further maintenance and so forth, we could consider a agreement with them to enter into a maintenance contract for PM, but at the moment, we're planning on going through that year period, and then we would look at how much, how many impacts we had and what the problems were, and then see what we would need to do at that time.
Mr. Doss?
Yes, Ms. McDonald.
Just, that brought up another question, Mr. Ballard. So where and how, where will the alarm go off that a door is not completely closed? Will it be at the school level? Will it be in your, who, who, who will monitor that?
Well, it, it, it won't be actually an alarm, but it's, it's identified, and it will show, you know, when you look at a diagram that that door's open, and that will be at the office of the schools.
Okay, so someone in the office will always, okay, very good, thank you.
Brown?
Mr. Ballard, my question is, will Chief Britt also be able to monitor and look at and see what's going on at the schools if, like, if doors are ajar and all that stuff?
Right now, that tie, does tie into the computer system, so I'm hoping that will be the case. I cannot say directly. He could just have full access at any time of that, but I think you'll be able to tap into the system and, and look at that.
Because I, definitely, it is a safety and security issue, so definitely Chief needs to be brought in the loop of everything that's, that's happening with that.
And I know that Mr. Holmes and...
We, that was actually part of the component of the user interface, so we'll be allowed to build user groups, where these are the administrative groups of this building, this is a security team, these are the people who the school wants to identify. Even when we were piloting some of the other products, we could say, like, I was part of it, Chief Britt and everybody, we were getting them for the whole district because we wanted to see what it looks like. And so, you know, if we want Chief Britt then to be a part of that group who gets the alerts, the same thing, the notifications that the administrators get, we can set up the groups that way. It gives us a lot of flexibilities and controls.
I just think it's good for him, if I, if I may, Presiding Officer, it would be good for him to know it in real time versus having to be updated or somebody calling him and letting him know. It'd just be good that if he had that information readily available, a part of that process, so.
Yes, sir.
I know Mr. Holmes and I are very interested to know if this door over here to our left is one of the one hundred and two that were identified.
I don't think that was one of the hundred and two that was identified, but that's the, the beauty of this system is that it is easy to install another system, and we also have the capabilities that it's, it's not so proprietary that we can't install them ourselves. So once we get them in and have the systems in, we'll be able to interact and do that.
All right.
We're not going to get an app on our phone?
No.
Any other questions from the board? If not, then I would entertain a motion for the access controls as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. McDonald and a second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That will be five oh. All right. Detail crew agreement, Mr. Ballard.
Okay, the next item is, is something that was kind of sprung on us on May seventeenth, actually. We have had an issue, and I have noted in some of my reports, and it's been mentioned that since April, we have not had a detail crew. And part of the reason for that was that our detail crew guard had been hired by the city. And so we were hoping, and we're in discussions with the, the warden and the people at the Correctional Institute, to get us another guard when they had one available. Was, subsequent to that, on May seventeenth, the county manager asked if he could talk with me after a meeting and presented us with the fact that, how they're struggling. Of course, you know, city and county or both had a lot of costs with, related to the storms and stuff and struggles out there. But one of the things, he said, there'd been some changes with the way some of the funding mechanism worked, and they were having to, to pay a bigger portion for the inmates that they had in-house. So there, there is a typo there, and I pointed out, but it was, we were told, I was told one thing, about sixty-eight dollars per day. Then it was actually revised down to sixty-two dollars a day. So he was saying it basically costs sixty-two dollars a day to, for each inmate. And of that, the state provided twenty-two dollars a day, leaving a forty-dollar delta that they were having to pay. And with the current inmates that they had in the system right now, that was coming up with somewhere between four and a half to five and a half million dollars additional was coming out of the county's budget. And he said they just could not afford to, to do that anymore, that, you know, if we wanted to keep the inmate labor, then we would need to cover the additional cost of, of the labor. Again, when you look at that... Again, when you look at that, roughly $14,600 a year is that difference. So when you look at it, it's still a, a very good deal for a worker. And being that we have a lot of shortages within our workforce right now, both on the maintenance side and the custodians, those folks have benefited us greatly. We've had them since 91, and they've been a tremendous help to the school district. So with that, we would like to try to go ahead and work through with the, the county. As you may remember, we did sign a new agreement last year with the county in regards to the, the detail crew guard and the detail crew and what our responsibilities are with that. And so at this time, what we would like to recommend is that you all, the Griffin Spalding County School Board, approve amending the detail crew agreement to also cover the excess cost of the inmates for the FY 2024 year. And that way, we can then get back with the county manager and make those adjustments to the agreement to bring back to you for, for final signature to move forward. And he did tell me that if we agreed to this and we would pay for it, that they, they would make sure we would get a guard and, and could have the, the personnel that we needed.
Is it always six?
Sorry. Any questions, board members? Ms. McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Doss. Is it always six inmates? Is it always six inmates that, on the crew?
We have up to six, and sometimes it's less. And that's one of the things that, that he and I talked about, is the fact that it, it makes sense if we have inmates that we pay for inmates. But if for some reason you don't have an inmate, we shouldn't just necessarily be paying for six regardless. And so that was one thing. Right now, we, we are billed for the guard on a quarterly basis. And so that was part of what I had discussed with him is maybe we could work it out where we could bill for the inmates on a quarterly basis also based on the ones we have available.
But in the past, it's very, I think what I hear you saying, in the past, it's been very rare that you would not have six.
That, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Holmes?
I, I know the guys out there, CI, the inmates, they, they have pretty good working condition. No weekend, no holidays. Are, are we considering that in this per day that we're gonna pay them? Have that been adjusted?
Well, what, what it is, basically that $14,600 is, is, is the cost for a year of them. And so that's part of what I am suggesting and talked to him about is, you know, if we could kind of restructure that where we're paying close to the equivalent maybe, but it really is just for when they're working.
Right.
And so, so that's what, and he said that he was willing to, to, you know, us to talk through that. But the maximum amount will be the $14,600.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. No other questions? Entertain a motion to approve the detail crew agreement.
So moved.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Holmes. Is that a second by?
You go back and repeat your motion, Mr. Holmes, please.
I, I make a motion to approve it.
I'm not sure I understand what he's saying.
He's in negotiation. As we mentioned, they don't work weekends and holidays. So they're talking about in, in adjustment, but it will be down no, no more.
That $14,000 could decrease. And then I have a second by Ms. Barbara Jo? Or did you have a question?
I withdraw mine, yes.
You withdraw?
Well, Zach made another one.
Okay. So do I have a second? I have a motion, do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Barbara Jo's seconds. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That'll be five oh. All right. Mr. Ballard, you're still up. Four-wheel drive truck.
Okay, so this year, we did have in our budget $55,000 to purchase a new vehicle. We had kind of waited and then thought that we, we may hold off. But when I had to go back with next year's budget and make some adjustments, we took a vehicle out of that one. So wanted to go ahead and try to move forward with purchasing a vehicle this time. In addition to that, we did have a number of vehicles, actually seven, that were damaged during the storm. And several of those, we're still working with to try to get going, and the insurance company has agreed to pay for parts of it. But, but that's not covering everything, so we're still looking at that. So we've been fortunate with regard to vehicles that our maintenance crew is down right now, or we would have actually not had enough vehicles for everybody to operate over the last several months. So with that, we had, had looked at, the finance department had already prepared bids and gotten some bids for the transportation department. So we were able to utilize the, the bids that, that they had pulled together. The low prices, the, the two lowest prices that they got were from Speedway Ford and then a, another dealership in Fayetteville. And so after receiving that, we did ask them, reach back out to see, since they, these were on the gray trucks. Ours is usually white fleet, if not necessary, but just to reach back out and see, could we actually get a, consider a white truck in that range with the same specifications? And just to make sure of availability. So with that, we have been told that there, at the time we checked with them last week, that there was one available. With both dealerships, one of them, they had to bring one in from another dealership, but one there was, had one available. But they felt like they could provide something by the end of this month. So with that, as I mentioned, we had $55,000 in the budget. The top price, or the price that we were looking at for the local truck was $55,259. We do have other line items within that budget category that's under, so we can cover the other $259,000 or $259 with that. And that being the case, we would recommend that the Griffin Spalding County Board of Education approve the purchase of one four-wheel drive work truck that can obtain, be obtained prior to June 30th for a price not to exceed $55,259.
Okay. Board members, any questions? Hearing none, I entertain a motion for the recommendation of the truck. I have a motion by Mr. Holmes.
Second.
Second by Ms. McDonald. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All right. We will then, still with Mr. Ballard, service agreements and price continuations.
Okay. Last but not least, is something that we've prepared for a number of years now, just kind of as a tie-in, finish-up to go along after the budget is established. And we do have, you know, potential within our contractual agreements to extend agreements if things are going well. In addition to that, we have utilities and like the city of Griffin water and sewer bills, power bills that we really don't bid out. That's just continuous. But we'd like to make you aware of it, like to make you aware of what the budget number was and, and what we were showing there. And then we also have professional services agreements that we don't necessarily have to bid out. But, but again, we like to just go ahead and keep things transparent, note, note what's out there and what is there for. And all this does coincide and falls within the, the bounds of our approved budget. And with that, we just wanted to put those out there, make you aware of them, and recommend that Griffin Spalding Board of Education extend the noted service agreements and our pricing for FY 2024 for these different categories.
Okay. Board members, do you have any questions for Mr. Ballard? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for the service agreements and price continuations for fiscal year '24. I have a motion by Mr. Holmes.
Second.
Second by Ms. McDonald. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That'll be five oh.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We, we had had some challenges at the first of last year for a couple of reasons. Those have, have been much better after some talking with the companies and getting things back in, in line for the rest of this year. So that's going along well, but that possibility is still out there. We do have a, a concern, and we, we've talked through this some, in the fact that with the pricing right now and previous bids that we've had, that if we rebid, the prices may be up. It could be higher, but we could certainly have it left it open that we can go out for rebids. But we know what, what their prices are, and, and we could have that as our not-to-exceed price.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Ballard. Any other questions for Mr. Ballard on this particular item? All right. Is there, what is the pleasure of this body as it relates to this particular item?
We have a motion and second on the board. We just need to all vote.
All right. So we call in for the vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. Five zero. Therefore approved.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, contract with K-12 Assessment Solutions, Dr. Audrey Greer.
Good evening again, Chairman Brown, Board, and Superintendent Simmons. My first request seeks to contract with K-12 Assessment Solutions for the development of benchmark assessments at a cost not to exceed $28,500. We are looking to work collaboratively with K-12 Assessment Solutions to create assessments to be administered in an online platform for the 23, 24 school year. We have used in-house created district assessments for benchmarks in the past, but we are looking to find another solution. And with that option, K-12 Assessment Solutions will provide high-quality sets of assessments to assess student learning, identify areas of challenge for remediation or instructional next steps, and measure mastery for the Georgia State standards. The benchmark assessments that will be created will be for the following grade levels and courses, including fifth grade science, eighth grade science, and social studies, Algebra I, biology, US history, and American literature. It is recommended that the Griffin Spalding Board of Education approves a contract with K-12 Assessment Solutions for the development of benchmark assessments at a cost not to exceed $28,500.
Ladies and gentlemen, this body, you've heard the presentation from Dr. Audrey Greer. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Doss of the second. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Dean of this body, Ms. Barbara Jo Cook. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Five zero. Therefore approved. Thank you, Dr. Greer. Last but not least, supplemental instructional materials for six through eight social studies.
Yes, this request seeks to purchase the Gallup paid supplemental instructional materials and resources for six through eight social studies at a cost not to exceed $26,000. The Gallup paid Georgia Experience class sets for grades six, seven, and eight are 100% aligned to the Georgia standards of excellence. They will include print and digital resources for students and teachers. We do receive some core instructional materials from the Georgia Department of Education, but those are limited. We are seeking to provide supplemental sets for classrooms in the middle school as well as provide professional development for teachers to be able to effectively use these materials in their classrooms. It is recommended that the Griffin Spalding Board of Education approves the purchase of Gallup paid supplemental instructional materials and resources for six through eight social studies at a cost not to exceed $26,000. Any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Greer on this item? All right, we've heard the presentation. What is the pleasure of this body?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It has been moved by the Dean of this board, Barbara Jo Cook of the fourth, and seconded by Vice Chair Will Doss of the second. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to voting on this item? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Five zero. Therefore approved. Thank you so much, Dr. Greer. All right. No information item. Are there any board member comments? We'll start to my left, Mr. Holmes.
All right. Mr. Doss? Yes, thank you, staff, for all you are doing. I hope that you are able to get a breath of fresh air this summer, even though you're still here doing a lot of the work. But we're shifting and preparing for a great school year coming up.
Thank you so much. McDonald of the fifth.
I'm good. Thanks.
All right. Cook of the fourth.
Hi, I want to thank the staff and Dr. Simmons for a great informative meeting tonight. It's been very productive, and I appreciate all of your efforts.
All right, and we Gucci in the first, so no board member comments. We do have executive session coming up. We are going to executive session this time to discuss and deliberate upon the employment of personnel. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to executive session?
Second.
All right. It has been moved by Leader Holmes of the third to go into executive session, seconded by Mr. Doss of the second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. All right, we are in executive session. Thank you.
Bruce, 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 Baron.